And opening exercises are, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes. If we would rise.
We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right there, and then we'll follow that with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we would just bow our heads. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, and before we prove the agenda, I have a couple of changes. We're adding to the agenda for good cause, number three. See, approve Janet Love to be appointed to the position of Assistant Principal at Citrus High School effective July 1, 2025. And we are removing from the agenda, School Support Services approving the Vice Chair, Joe Farady's out-of-state travel to the National Safety Symposium in St. Louis. Okay? And with that, will I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frank, a second by Mr. Dodd, to adopt the agenda as recommended by Superintendent Hebert. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Citizens comments regarding items requesting approval on the agenda or any other comments at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to number three, School Support Services. Approve the appointment of the administrative personnel for the 25-26 school year.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Always lovely to be here on a nice Tuesday morning here in the summer. We come before you this morning to ask for you to approve the appointment of the administrative personnel for the 2025-2026 school year.
And it was attached to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of the administrative personnel for the 25-26 school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Farady, a second by Mr. Frank, to approve the appointment of the administrative personnel for the 25-26 school year. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you for the long list.
Oh, yes. Next, we ask you approve the instructional support recommendations as outlined in the Golden Rod. Now, this one's even longer.
I'll make a motion to approve the instructional support recommendations.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Farady, to approve the instructional and support recommendations on the Golden Rod. Any discussion? Like the long list.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Excellent. All right, it gives me great honor today to ask for you to approve Janet Love to be appointed to the position of Assistant Principal of Citrus High School effective July 1, 2025. And Ms. Love is here.
Can we do the approval first?
Yes.
Let's do the, I was going to say, we can do the approval first, and then we're going to make you talk.
Were you making it?
Go ahead.
Oh, move approval of Janet Love to be appointed to the position of Assistant Principal of Citrus High School effective July 1, 2025.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Frank to approve Janet Love to be appointed to the position of Assistant Principal at Citrus High School effective July 1, 2025. Now...
Yes.
Point of order, we did not vote.
Oh. All those in favor?
Aye.
I dare you to say no. Passes unanimously.
Good morning, Dr. Hebert, Board members, and everybody else here. I would, first of all, like to say, as a 1985 graduate of Citrus High, once a hurricane, always a hurricane, I get to go full circle. I...
I didn't realize that, wait a minute.
You got a bunch of, I taught, you got a bunch of pirates up here.
Understand that. I taught at Citrus High in 2004 to 2008, and left the state of Florida to gain a little different experience that got me here today. I'm looking forward to serve our students and our staff in the strong CHS tradition and help that grow and maintain. I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
If I can just point of order for a minute, Chair.
Of course.
Just to share, Ms. Love has a great deal of experience administratively in the state of Ohio, so we appreciate her bringing that back, and she served, if you weren't aware, at LaCanto High School with the Dina students for the past several years. So I know with Ms. Leonard moving from the 12-month into the principal role, it's going to be nice to have Ms. Love. It'll be a seamless transition as her curriculum assistant principal, the 12-month position at Citrus. And just so you know, Ms. Love, it starts July 1, so your vacation is like three days. So you're done, okay?
So noted. All right, next on the agenda, we have the, well, Ms. Johnson, I think you're going to do it, aren't you? Terms of agreement for the iReady program?
Good morning.
I'm asking for approval for the terms of agreement amendment to the original contract for the purpose of iReady Program Curriculum Associates LLC.
I make a motion that we approve the terms of agreement of the amendment to the original contract for the purchase of the iReady Program Curriculum Associates LLC.
I have a motion by Mr. Farady, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the terms of the agreement for the original contract for the purchase of iReady Program Curriculum Associates LLC. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I know the return on the investment of this program because kids talk about it constantly when I worked in the schools, and they wanted to get to their iReady. So, you know, when a child looks forward to learning on this program, it's definitely a payout for us.
Yes, it is a great program to differentiate instructions for all students, yeah.
I know, just touring the classrooms, I mean, that was, probably you would see that on.
Right, and the stage they were looking forward to, so.
And I would just add that, and Ms. Johnson, you can expand on this, but it is not used nor is it ever intended to replace good instructional one-on-one FaceTime teaching. This is to provide a tool to assess, monitor, and improve instruction and identify deficiencies for the student's learnings that they can improve on that. Would that be correct?
I would, oh, yeah, absolutely. I would say that 80% of iReady is direct instruction from the teacher based upon the toolkit. The online pathway that each student has is only supposed to be done 45 minutes a week. So there is a lot of curriculum inside of iReady that helps one-on-one instruction or whole group instruction in our classrooms.
Thank you.
Yes.
But I hear all those same comments, but what I didn't hear this year was that it was a good predictor of their indicator on the state test.
We have not had our end-of-the-year iReady data chat with Curriculum Associates, but typically, it's a very high, like 80% correlation between fast and iReady.
And they're maintaining that.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and then, but the price keeps going up.
As everything does, yes.
Because we're just charged a flat price, it's not by the number of students we're serving.
No, it's per school. It is kind of per student, but they give a lot of leeway if we do go, they're very good about that, yeah.
I think it's still worth the money.
It is, I think so as well.
But we've got to watch budget because we're going to be short this year.
Yes, yes. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I just wish they had a module for adults for, for Internet Protocol training.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to attorney legal matters?
I have nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time? Any other business that come before the Board? Superintendent Hebert?
On a legal matter, how are we doing on the towers? I know the removal of the towers are in this process and...
They're done.
They're done?
Yeah.
Yes. So was that the only tower that was going to be removed?
That was the only tower.
Yeah.
And the rest are online now, or?
I'm not sure if they're online, they're going to go tower by tower.
Okay.
And then do that, so I know there was some access to them.
Okay.
That's all that is. They're working on it.
Thank you.
Dr. Hebert?
Yes.
So I just wanted to share with the budget. I know last week, we put some communication out regarding the budget, and just to kind of give a little framework of reference, you know, we have a $320 million budget. So because of the loss of students, it's about 1%. Now, that's 3.5 million, that's not something to sneeze at, but it still is when you think about the total budget of 320 million. It's also the operational budget of what we do, and we get that funding based on students that are in our district. And as you know, we fluctuate with students, sometimes we get more students, sometimes we get less students. So as we're projecting what's happening, students, which is an impact of 3.5 million. When we were alerted to that, and we were in contact with Tammy Wilson, our Finance Director, for a few more days, Ms. Wilson, we sat down as a team, our leadership team has met multiple times, we've met with schools, we've met with district staff, we're looking at efficiencies, trying to make sure we're being efficient in some of the things we do, if we have duplication of services, we're looking at some of those programs, we may have to say, if we have two things that do the same, why are we keeping both, let's just eliminate down to one particular platform. So we're looking at that, and we're carefully monitoring every position. So we've done what we call a pause on hiring, which is different than a freeze, because a pause means we're looking, obviously, we posted and hired some folks today, and there are continual positions that we're looking at that we still feel there's a need to post and fill. So we're going to continue to work through that, and we'll update you as we go through what those specifics are, but those were just some of the pieces that we've done in place. Ms. Greco, did you have anything you felt needed to be addressed or shared? So I want to give the Board, if you had any questions for Ms. Greco or I, or any comments, you know, Ms. Wilson, I've asked her to be in attendance for a little bit this morning to answer any questions you may have for that.
Not because we always interrupted her part of the program, but we might consider, I've always thought maybe we should have budget and finance first on the agenda before we spend all the money, and then we wouldn't interrupt her all the time.
Well, I, it's funny, Ms. Wilson did talk to me as we were going, as I was going through transition in November till now, so my plan was, and I've actually spoken to Ms. Adele about moving that finance part to the front of the agenda, but it's not because Ms. Wilson's leaving, it's just a matter of, as we were going through some of the changes, so it didn't go on deaf ears, Ms. Wilson.
So I, yeah, I had a little comment, and I'm glad Ms. Wilson's here, we are going to miss her, by the way, so appreciate the work that she's done. I wasn't able to be there this last week, I think they had a little get-together, but we appreciate Tammy's diligent work and all those clean audits that we had all those years, just made my job as a Board member a lot less stressful, so thank you for that. I do have a little bit of concern, obviously, with this loss, the needing to dip into our unreserved fund balance, and we have a board policy of 3.5% that we have of our budget that is the unrestricted fund balance that we want to keep, and that's for things like this, when things do happen. So we know there's going to be time to time, over the decade, there's going to be times when we've got to dip into our fund balance. That's just, you know, business, that's the business end of the school district. So the thing that concerns me is that we've got to have that plan where this doesn't become the norm, because we can't continue to dip into the fund balance like we are this year. And we still have some more time remaining in this budget year, so it could be a little bit more than the 3.5 million, from what I understand, but I was interested in talking to Ms. Wilson a little bit about the stopgap measures we're putting in place now, and you're leaving us, and we're going to have, you know, we're in the process of hiring a new Finance Director, but just to talk a little bit about what we need to really be looking at, if you don't mind.
Well, I know, like Dr. Hebert said, we are looking at staffing and making sure that, you know, the students are going somewhere, so are we staffing efficiently for those classrooms? That's a big thing, we've talked about, you know, program, I mean, he pretty much said everything, we've been looking at programs and things. We really can't control the price of fuel or the cost of electricity, you know, we can bump those ACs up a little bit and do things like that, but the big things are actually, unfortunately, they impact the classroom a lot, and that's where we have to look at. The students are leaving, so are we still meeting all the needs of the students? So those are the things we're working at. I've been, I actually spent some time last night, even after I went home, working on making sure, seeing, right now, we haven't had to, we're about $5,000 away from touching the fund balance, I hadn't even got to share with Ms. Greco and Dr. Hebert, so we're still $5,000 away, but we're still looking at those year-end expenses, especially since we're right at the end of the year, you know, to see what's going to happen, and trying to get as much of the budget in place before I'm gone next week. A big concern right now, you know, Nash, worldwide, you know, we kind of just went to war, and fuel prices stayed very low this year, they were very consistent, so we were able to, you know, save some money there, save some money in other areas, and so that's going to be a big concern, too, looking at tariffs is a big thing, too, our prices, you know, we had the one bid that we had to hold off on. So there's a lot of things, not just statewide, but nationally and then globally, that are affecting our budgets, and it's just, it's all coming to head at one time, so.
And we were actually above the 3.5%, weren't we, on our unrestricted?
Yes, we were over 5, so I'm still hoping that the end of this year, that we'll end up above the 3.5. Dipping into the fund balance doesn't mean we're going below the 3.5, it just means we're going to probably not have 5-point, whatever we had at the end of last year, we might just have a little less, but then we might need to use that next year to make the ends meet, so you guys, you know, are able to meet all your needs for next year.
And I think the goal is that we're not going to do that. Our goal, I know Ms. Greco and I, our conversation we've had is, we don't want to do that, so that's why we're trying to be proactive at this point, to look at some of those pieces. And I know you mentioned the classroom, and I want you to know, our goal is to not impact the classroom.
Not impact it.
And what you said, which I think was good clarification, is, you know, if we don't have the students, do we need the same number of teachers? You know, if we've lost, if we've had a fluctuation of students going to different places, then do we need that many teachers in those programs? You know, we're looking at district level, are there positions up here that we can say, do we need those positions right now? Can we take a hold or a pause on them, and eventually maybe relook to bring them back? So I just want to make that point clear.
Even like seats and licenses that we have, we don't need 17,000 seats if we don't have 17,000 students. So those are, those are things I know all the departments are looking at, you know, where we can be more efficient.
And when I ask about the percentage, even if we cover, which we will cover with our unrestricted fund balance, we're still going to be above our 3.5% that the Board has set in policy.
At the end of this year, I believe we should, I mean, you should be, yes, I mean, I won't be here, but what I'm looking at, my projections of what we're spending and what we have coming in, we will be above it. It's really working on the budget for next year, and like, we've never had a budget come in in June, you know, that's three months later than it's ever come in, so the planning has been, you know, difficult. We've been very cautious as we've moved forward, you know, the last three months. I think the 1st of March is usually the latest we get the budget in a late year, so.
And we anticipated some of this coming, which is why we've made some decisions back in April when we were doing staffing, knowing that, predicting what was going to happen, working with Ms. Wilson. So there were some already things that we had put into place.
But I think, as Ms. Wilson indicated, the state did not release the budget to us to know, and I mean, she and I were daily communication, where, have you gotten anything? And I'd ask her, and back and forth, and I was calling up to DOE, so we were even to the last minute trying to figure out where we were, but we were, a lot of this had already been being proactive, as Ms. Greco said, during our staffing process, so we're already working on that.
And we're hearing, and I've had a couple of community members approach me, because with the downfall, and I have assured them that we are not going to do away with any of the arts programs.
No.
You know, the other school systems always...
I don't, I mean, we haven't talked about that at all, that's not even been a consideration at all.
I just wanted to assure the community that we might not need those teachers, but the arts programs in this school system will stay.
Yeah, I think the big thing now is just the staffing, we've got to make sure that you're looking at the positions, the needs of the schools, based on enrollment and the staff positions.
Yes, 85% of our general fund budget is salary and benefits, and FRS did go up, and I calculated that yesterday, and so we really are getting like about, that's going to cost us about half of the increase. So we have a little bit of an increase from the third cap, but we, from the original budget last year, you know, we're down 4.4. So that little bit of increase they gave us is what's bringing us at least up to 3.5-ish is what we're estimating. So the FRS is taking up about half of what the state feels like they're giving us more money, even though they really aren't giving us more money. So, and one thing they did do, which I did send all those out to you, the APIB, they're calling it accelerated academics or something, they pulled that out of the base student allocation and made it a categorical, even though we always treat it as a categorical, they kind of did their little shell game and made it look like, oh, look, we're giving you all this money for academic acceleration, we were already always getting that, they just took it out of the base student allocation, so.
Well, Mr. Dodd, I really appreciate you bringing this up, because it's important to me, too. You know, the way I look at fund balance is, it's, you know, it's for an emergency, and I don't think it's an emergency yet, because we can still plan for it, so I appreciate what you guys are doing, and let's just trying to, number one, just try and avoid it, and number two, have a plan to put the money back when we can, so.
And that's our goal, I know Ms. Greco and I have talked about, we want to continue to increase that fund balance, so that when there are situations like this, we can say we're comfortable pulling out of that fund balance to be able to address things without any concern. But at this point, our goal is to not have to do that in the future, so we're working to do that now.
Couple of questions, Ms. Wilson. First of all, you know my heart and how much I'm going to miss you, and, but you're not going to be that far.
No.
So we're, we have you there, and we appreciate all of your service.
Thank you.
There's been a little talk here about the fund balance. I've been around with you long enough to go through, I wish I could tell you that this is one of those years where like, oh my gosh, the sky is falling, and I'm not sure that I'm of that same worry. Any amount of money is always impactful, but we've been there during some tougher times. We've been there when, I think we've ducked into the fund bounds and gone below our policy or right at our policy.
We were probably right at it, I do not believe in the 19 years I've been in finance, we've gone...
But I think we were pretty close to it, especially during, you know, some of the Duke years and some of those challenges, when we kind of had the perfect storm of, we had reduced funding in one area and other funding in another. So I see this as absolutely an opportunity, but in this situation, is this not really about scalability? Isn't this really about the fact that we have students that aren't just leaving us? Because they're kind of leaving us in one time, and then they're coming back to us at another time, but we don't necessarily always get that perfect roll of that money.
Correct.
Because we had a plan today for a student that may or may not be there, but now all of a sudden in November, that student's decided they're coming back to us, but we don't get to budget that money coming back to us, and that's going to be the norm.
Correct.
So I appreciate, I really appreciate, Dr. Hebert, you trying to be very forthcoming and transparent to go, listen, this is where we're at, and, but I also think what you've tried to say is, this is scalability, this is the new educational world that we're in. We're going to have people that were up one year a little bit, and were down another year, and we have to have programs and operations that have that scalability built into it. So I'm appreciative that you are collaborating with the stakeholders by communicating that. I think this is not insurmountable by any stretch, I believe this is as much about efficiencies, which is really about scalability, than anything, and I think it's just the new way we're doing business. I am grateful to serve in a Goldilocks school district like Citrus County, where we're just the right size, because you can make these modifications, we can make these efficiency changes and make those improvements without impacting the classroom. And I would just remind us, what we have learned over the years, is simply saying, well, because we didn't do it to the physical classroom, it didn't mean we didn't impact the classroom. And I'm grateful for Dr. Hebert, who says, the classroom goes beyond just those four walls in the classroom, they are the supports that we give, they are the administration that we give to ensure that that whole teacher, along with that whole student, is taken care of.
And if I can just tag on to that for just a moment, so as we talked about the flexibility, you know, one of my goals is to make sure kids have multiple pathways and opportunities. So I think as we talk about students having choice, which we believe in giving kids choices of where they want to learn and how they want to learn, we may have to lean into some different flexible models, that Ms. Greco and I have talked about, is how do we make sure some of the families that say, well, I'd like to be a part of this, but I also want to do a part of this, how do we make sure to do that? So we've got to work on, how do we make sure that some of our schools are offering some of those flexible models, so we're able to address the needs of our families and our students? That's my goal.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
With all of this earth being turned up here in this county, you know, and how much of it, and Mr. Dixon probably could answer this better, how much of that is going to impact us with population of our schools? We can't predict it, correct? You know, how many developments are they, and how far out are they? That's my question.
Well, what we're dealing with is two factors. One is all of the growth that's coming into the county, and the other is the change in the dynamics of our voucher program, and how, it's going to flow, kind of like homeschool did after COVID, until we get a handle on it, we're going to have growth, but it's going to be at a slower rate, it's going to primarily be in elementary. In high school, we're going to have to think about offering other options for students, and, you know, we need to look at, we need to be open-minded and look at what, I talk to a lot of these parents, they call me up and they say, this is what I want to do, can I do this? I talked to one last week whose son was going to high school, he wanted to do ROTC, but he wanted to do the voucher program so that he could do virtual at-home and travel, but he wants to come back to graduate.
Mm-hmm.
So he's planning on taking a year off, like a gap year or whatever, and do this voucher thing, and then he's going to come back, so how do you plan for that?
Right.
You know, we need to...
Can't be the only one.
Yeah.
No, it's the standard.
So I guess we just need to start thinking in those terms, and if we do get a big charter school, you know, how are we going to relate to it? You know, the Tuscan E. project was proposing a 15-acre charter school, but 15 acres is hardly enough to do the kind of programs that we offer for a high school, so they're probably not going to want to do that the whole time, they're probably going to want to shift back and forth, or they're probably going to want to share some of the brick-and-mortar and charter experience, and how do we get paid for that? I mean, how do we, how do we fund our programs when we have that going on? So all those things, we just need to think about.
Do you think that the, you know, we see our probably most capacity opportunity at middle school? It seems to be that's where we have capacity the most, and at times, I can't help but think that it's interesting, that's where it seems like, all of a sudden by high school, we start seeing a lot of our private school students start to come back into our system, and they either want to take advantage of athletics or JORTC or other opportunities, and then, like you say, they want flexibility, they want to, sometimes their families are traveling, or there's employment situations, but then they want to, they want to come back to some traditional environment, it seems like, right, that last year in particular, I see that quite a bit.
They want the diploma.
And dual enrollment is another factor and an opportunity. Many of us who are own children have used that as an opportunity, that impacts our enrollment numbers, and I think that's scalability. I'm grateful, though, because I do think we have a leadership team that is mindful of it, that is recognizing of that parent choice... of it, that is recognizing of that parent choice. Mr. Dixon has talked about this for years of being able to provide choice even before choice was thought of as choice. We offered choice in Citrus County and we've even accommodated transportation through Maryland Farmer wherever it was possible. So I think we are in a good opportune state.
I try to look at it as an opportunity. You know, it is what it is, so I think it's an opportunity. We just need to find out how to make it work for us.
Yet everywhere you go, the earth is being turned up for a new something, so.
We're going to get growth and it's good. I think in the elementary area, they want to come to a brick and mortar school. They want to feel like their child's being, you know, cared for. They want to, safety's a big issue. When they start getting older, they want other options, you know, and we need to think about that.
Just while Chuck's up there, though, thank you for what you're doing on the impact fees.
Yes.
I think it's, we're heading in the right direction. I think we want one more hurdle to go across?
Yes, and I think the BOCC is very supportive of our public schools.
And I think we all need to publicly thank them as well because it's, you know, the last round of impact fees, they assessed ours at 50%, never put it back up. So now we're going back to 100 and then whatever the data shows it needs to be.
In that regard, that was actually a note that I had. Should we ask then our chairperson on our behalf? No, we don't, the letter doesn't have to come back to us, Mr. Bradshaw, so. So can, you know, should we direct our chairperson to draft a letter of thanks to the commissioners?
You need that in motion?
You're the one that.
I'll make a motion that we direct the chairwoman to send a letter to the board of county commissioners thanking and then requesting that they adopt it the full 100%.
And I'd second that.
Okay, we'll do that.
Do we need all in favor and all that?
Look, can we just do it by consent or do you want us to vote, Mr. Bradshaw?
Okay.
All those in favor of writing a letter to the county commissioners as a thank you for the sales tax generation?
If there's nothing else on the budget, I had one more item that I wanted to do and I was remiss.
It's like Steve Jobs from Apple, and then there's just one more thing.
And there's one more thing. So I'd like Ms. Love to come back up because you didn't introduce who's here with you today. I think that's very important to know who's in the audience. You've got two very special people. Would you mind doing that, please?
I would happily.
You know, you get nervous. My father, who was David Brooks, he taught at Citrus High from the early 80s to 1999. He was a science teacher. And then my husband, Todd Love.
Thank you. Because I'll tell you, that's, for me, family's important for everything we do. Our community's very important, so having that support is very important. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business to come before the board? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn the special meeting and we will open up the workshop. And first on the agenda is one of our favorite people. Speaking of thanks, 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 and thanks, Mrs. Burdette's going to give us an update on the Educational Foundation.
I know, you're right.
Thank you, thank you.
You know my dad's.
I did have. Okay.
Oh, that's, yes.
I think so. No, thank you.
Oh, wow.
I don't want to. Ready? Are we ready?
I did, I thought I did. Where did they go?
That's okay. Good morning. Thank you so much to the board, Ms. Greco, for allowing us to talk a little bit about the impact of the Education Foundation, something we like to do each year to kind of bring forward the work that the foundation is doing in collaboration with the school district. So right out of the gate, I'm talking about budget, talking about student program, I just want to give you a few numbers that we've been working with this year. Although for the Education Foundation, our greatest achievement is impact. That's not always dollars. It's what we can do to impact the classroom, the district, and overall. So talking a little bit about some direct student programming, this past year, over 445,000 went to those additional direct student programming, items like reading pals, mentoring with our pre-K and kindergarten students, math field day, first library, science fair, summer rise. There are multitude more of those programs, but these are programs that directly happen in the classroom, out of the classroom, but are programs that we fully fund through partnerships in the community that happen here. So we're very excited about that impact and outcome for this year. Moving forward, how do we do those things? How do we raise those funds? What happens? So we just kind of want to let everyone know, at the end of this fiscal year, we had 22 programs that we were funding collaboratively or directly associated with the school district and having 20 events on our calendar. Next year, it looks like 22, so we've added a couple, but we're trying our best to be creative in revenue sources and ideas, but also including our partners throughout the community. There are very, this community is incredible and there are a lot of people who are very passionately specifically about programs that happen in our school system. So we never want to turn those folks away and we want to do what we can to bring that funding forward. So we're working on creating additional ways to do that. We know that 16,000 number is out there, a little less, but I must tell you, with the Education Foundation, we have an open door policy that all children in Citrus County are our children. So we do work with homeschool groups, we do work with private schools currently in any way that we can to help serve those students. I think the biggest takeaway for me is something that Mr. Dodd had said earlier and Mr. Kennedy, those students come back. And so we want to make sure that through their educational journey, we're doing everything we can, no matter where they are being educated. So we want to continue to do that. We want to be a part of helping those grad rates increase through our mentoring programs or through any programs that Dr. Hebert may bring forward to us to help with enrichment, academic gains, empowerment of pathways and what they choose to do and the opportunities that are available. So talking a little bit more about numbers, community partnerships and relationship impacts. When we take a look at how do these programs work, bringing in 608,899.77, 578,000 of that went directly back to the classroom of those programs coming in. The difference there is some operational cost that'll be used for next year's programs. So we've already aligned our funding coming in to make sure we have programs ready for this upcoming school year. It is our goal, now that the budget is here, we will sit down with Dr. Hebert, Ms. Greco, Ms. Crowell, Mr. Bittner, and go over some of these programs. Are they still in alignment with moving forward and can funding be shifted to additional programming or changes in programming that will allow additional funding to be available? We want to take a look, too, at that district other pass-through. Those are people in the community, again, as we talk about moving forward, who are very passionate about program specifics. So $729,000 came through the foundation this year for those specific pass-through programs. I am honored and humbled by that number. I have a team that I feel is the very best of any team out there and it is a total team effort to make these things happen, but the integrity of the foundation and our community trusting us with those dollars to bring those in right back to the students of Citrus County is truly an honor for us. This year, we've had an additional 398,000 come in in scholarship dollars that we will be handing out over the next few years. And our fundraising dollars came in high this year at 429,000. So it was a big year for the foundation, but I must tell you, as we're looking at the end of our year, rolling into next year, what comes in must go out. So we have brought in those dollars, we have used those dollars back in the classroom through programming, either on a district level, a school level, or an individual classroom level. So we are starting out our new year just at our operational cost of 225,000 that we do each year. So there aren't any funds left until we start to build that program back up. I cannot leave out the most important piece, and that is our in-kind program support. We have price lists there for you because we are still calculating those numbers, but direct in-kind support coming from our community is over a million dollars a year. And when you think about whether it's school supplies, whether it's different types of, any items that are coming into the classroom, it could be machinery, it could be different program pieces, that truly speaks volumes of our community and the true dedication that they have for our students. So we just kind of wanted to let you know, it is priceless and that number continues to grow every single day with donations coming in. So ultimate impact, I wanted to share this with you today. When we talk about how much funding comes in, how much funding goes out, what do we spend on our team and our staff? Because of our collaboration with the school district, we are able to be housed on the school district. Thank you, Dr. Hebert, for continuing that. And because of that, our operational costs are very low. We have a small but mighty team and we are proud to say that 93 cents of every dollar goes back to the Citrus County School District, students and families we serve. So we're operating just at about a 7% operational cost, and in the world of nonprofit, that is something to be very, very proud of. So we just want to share that with you today and let you know that the work continues. We will be meeting with Dr. Hebert and Ms. Greco to go over the funding coming in, the programs that exist, and where we can, scalability happens and where we can scale down or scale up, whatever it takes, to make sure that we are meeting as many needs as possible. Okay? So I'd like to open it up if you have any questions or comments about the foundation.
Ms. Burdette, thank you for your leadership, for your vision, for your recognizing that every person, whether it's a student or a teacher, has such value. The hurricanes would not have been the same if it wasn't for the Educational Foundation. We're grateful, too, to the governor and Senator Angola and Representative Grove for ensuring funding that way, and that's just another example. And that begs to say, I go around the state and when I talk about our beloved Educational Foundation, people are amazed. They're shocked. They're like, what are you doing? What makes Citrus County Educational Foundation unique and different than what we see around the state?
Thank you for that question. I think truly, and thank you for your kind words, I actually just left a conference and actually had the same question from another county. Someone from Citrus County was relocated down in the Sarasota area. They contacted the Ed Foundation there and found out it was a very, very different process of doing things and called me and said, you set me up. I thought this is how all foundations work. It is not. I want to tell you, we are unique in the sense of our relationship with the school district, being able to pick up the phone and call any of you, and I say that with the most gratitude to our school board members and to our school district employees as well. Having that one-on-one relationship with Dr. Hebert, knowing that Ms. Greco and I can speak at any time about anything that might be going on or the needs that might be happening, truly is a unique situation for Ed Foundations. Also aligning that pass-through purpose and knowing that the community can pass those dollars through, because we are the charitable organization that supports the school district, businesses and personal donations come through at a very high rate, and that's very different than our communities across the state. I take a lot of honor and am very humble that our community believes in us in that manner and because of that, and because of that integrity, we are able to do things that most foundations are not able to do. So again, I credit the relationship, the superintendent, his cabinet, and the school board for allowing us to work so closely together.
And I will say, what was it, two years ago that you did a breakout session at one of our state meetings? And you and past Superintendent Himmel defined exactly what we were doing in Citrus County, and they were amazed, but they didn't change. So we're very proud. And I think when you say the magic in the Citrus County Foundation is Shonda Burdette.
I know, coming from, you know, just part of my life up here, you know, as a past parent, as a past, you know, just member of the community, I was always amazed what you guys accomplished, but now that I'm sitting up here and really watching it, wow. So just keep it up. You've got my full support.
Thank you. And I must say, it's a total team effort. I have an incredible team from Tiffany King, who is our Director of Student Programs, Erica, who is our Finance Director, who is currently in the middle of an audit right now. So she may not feel the same way three days from now, but she is truly an incredible asset to our team. Meg Velardi, who's working in our program, and Josh White, who's been a huge part of our program. Josh is leaving us, he's moving on to bigger and better things, and we're very sad but very proud.
I can change his English grade and send him back.
So he's still going to be on the board and helping us, but he's taken a position to better his family and we're very excited for him. But our team working so closely together and our Board of Directors, which many people here, Lindsay, Ms. Crowell, serve on that. Ms. Lindeman has been a part of all of our work, so we are very, very proud. I know Ms. Johnson takes our crazy calls at all hours of the day and night, so we appreciate that and that's what makes it all possible, for sure.
I'd just like to tell you that every time there is an incident or an issue, your team steps up.
Yeah.
On everything, families, community members, student issues. So I'd just like to thank you because, you know, we work closely together in a lot of fundraisers and things along that way, and I'd just like to thank you for really doing what you do and your team.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing up the hurricane support. I must mention that the emergent fund that we have set up for staff members, for also student families, we work very closely with Student Services, which is also very unique for Citrus County. But this year, we were able in our emergent family through hurricane relief dollars coming in from a multitude of places to give out just over 299,000 in support to our families and really directly impacting 64 staff members during a time where they were unable to pull things together after that hurricane. So that is something we are truly proud of, that's something very personal to me and to my heart to be able to help those who come to work every day, take care of our children and don't let a hurricane stop them or a tornado or multitude of other things, but they're here every day and they make sure that our children are taken care of. So we just want to do our part, too. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
If I can just share, so Ms. Burdette, as you know, does a phenomenal job, we've all heard that, but the one piece that you neglected is Ms. Burdette's part of my leadership team that meets every Monday. So she doesn't have to pick up the phone. If she wants, she can wait and come to the meeting. So she is an integral part of the work that we do and my purpose for having Ms. Burdette on there was, one, her expertise, but also the community. Because as I've said all along, the community helps support what we do in our school system. So having Ms. Burdette, who really is that liaison with our community members, has been an integral part of things that we can do. And we're at the meeting and I'll say, we've got to do something, and Shonda either knows a person or has a funding source to help us do that. So we appreciate what you do, we appreciate the community, your team does an amazing job, and we couldn't do the work that we do without the support of the community and the support of your leadership there. So thank you for being a part of it and thank you for being a part of my team.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hebert. Again, we're here, whatever we can do, we look forward to, unique times, so we'll sit down and go over those dollars coming in and do what we can to support. Okay? Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
So much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I think we're going to go to item two next, is that right?
Yes.
I would like to request a short break. I'm having some issues with my computer and I want to be able to read my policies on the computer. I'm having to do it on my iPhone.
Okay.
So do you mind if we take a brief recess?
Sal Hall, I'm going to take you to fix that computer. Five minutes, 10 minutes?
No more pressure.
Maybe back at 10, maybe back at 10.
10 minutes, we'll come back at 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, Nick, there's a cop convention.
Okay, we'll discuss some policies.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We have five policies today, and if you make any changes, I'm going to have to stop and make some good notes, because my assistant is out of town on vacation, and she usually watches it and makes the notes, so...
But we understand, a lot of it's just NIFEC, and we agree with that.
Yeah. The first one is Policy 3.40. This is an update to Safe and Secure Schools. The update is recommended by NIFEC to provide for the use of the Fortify Florida System as well as training and instructions on the use to staff, parents, guardians, and students. Instructions to students must be developmentally appropriate. Changes are on page 11 of 14, and the Policy Informs Committee reviewed this item on April 17th.
So, I think it would be good if we removed the one comma prior, it should, on number two, I'm on page 11, number two, "Prior to the start of each school year or at the time of student enrollment if during the school year," should be one. When I first read that, I was like, "What, prior, but then if during the school year?" So, I think "Prior to the start of each school year, comma, or at the time of a student's enrollment if during the school year, comma, the district shall make training available." And again, that's the training for parents and guardians, right? The next, the next, number three, the next paragraph is, is within the first five days of each school year, you know, we're required to provide the training to students on Fortify Florida.
Correct. Did you want to make changes to number two?
Yes, I wanted to take the comma out.
Take the comma out after school year?
Or at the time of a student's enrollment if during the school year. That's all one statement, right?
Yes.
Prior to the start of the school year, comma, or at the time of a student's enrollment if during the school year. So, that second comma after enrollment would be taken out. And I did, Madam Chair, I did have a couple other questions, just, I know Rachel Montgomery's here, too, so on the, a couple things with those emergency agencies touring every campus at least once every three years, are we on press, on...
Yeah, so this year we don't have campus tours, next year we return to doing the high school, middle schools, last year we did elementary. So, they're scheduled in sections. So, we do every three years, we'll do the high school, middle school grouping, the following we'll do all the elementary, press, Renaissance, and then maybe a break-up tours, but we still do our SROs.
Right, and that's all those emergency agencies that we have listed, right? If they're Sheriff's Office, Fire, and the city fire departments are also involved in their city schools, correct? So, good, I just wanted to make sure, obviously, that's really important, and I know Sheriff Vincent will be on top of that, coming from his background, but it's good for those people in the trenches, so to speak, to be aware of those campuses and how they're laid out. And then on page nine, section 6A, the, I thought we had changed that on the planning. I know we have earlier in the document, it talks about the requirement for once every three years, but on page nine, just wanted to draw the attention to the school construction planning, which I thought, safety and construction planning. So, that's on page number nine of 14, section 6A. So, it repeats itself, we already have that first sentence in the policy prior to this. The school board shall allow law enforcement agencies and/or other agencies that are designated as first responders to districts' campus and schools' campuses to tour campuses once every three years. So, we already have that covered. And then it says, "Any changes related to school safety emergency issues recommended by a law enforcement agency based on a campus tour must be documented by the district school board." I think the requirement there is to for not just a law enforcement agency, I think it's if it's a first responder agency, but I didn't think that was what we were talking about in construction planning, right? I thought the construction planning that we had looked at changing, dealt with when we're planning new construction at a school or to change a school, like our front offices, that there would be input by agencies. So, I don't know if that's something that we can clean up, because really, is that statement that's there now really dealing with construction planning? I don't think it is. Maybe I'm reading, maybe I should read more into it. How is that statement dealing with construction planning?
I see what you're saying.
So, I thought there was some other wording in there, so I just think if you could do a little research and check on that, just check to see, because like I said, the first sentence is already in, let me see if I can find it in the policy. It's already in the policy above about the tours every three years. Yeah, I read it a little while ago, and I know it's there, so that's not the first time it's in the policy. So, if you could just check on that, I would appreciate it. There it is, it's on page number four. They'll coordinate with appropriate public safety agencies that are designated as first responders to schools' campus to conduct a tour of such campuses once every three years and provide recommendations related to school safety.
I think I see what you're saying. We'll do some, I'll get with Rachel, and we'll...
Okay, I appreciate it.
Can we do have new legislative changes that have come out, so there will be another legislative change to policy that...
Yeah. Okay, so maybe at that time you can bring this, or just clean that up, or check into that a little further, because like I said, the tour requirement is already in the policy, so. Other than that, I think, you know, that's just a simple addition. That's the only addition to that policy, right, that was underlined?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon, yeah. So, I'm good with that.
I just had a, no comments on the policy, but this is more of a question on Fortify FL.
Ah, Fortify Florida.
What is the difference between that and like Crime Stoppers?
So, Fortify Florida is the state system that guarantees there's going to be a follow-up. I mean, Crime Stoppers does two kind of, but Crime Stoppers is something we do extra, the Sheriff's Office did.
Yeah.
And Campus Crime Stoppers is a way there can be a reward given for information. So, Campus Crime Stoppers is not just for reporting information, there's a little more to that. I think we would rather it go to Fortify Florida.
Yeah, so the major difference that I noticed...
You can come on up.
Thank you. Major difference that I noticed between Campus Crime Stoppers and Fortify Florida is Campus Crime Stoppers gets submitted online the same way as Fortify is, but it goes through a filtering process of a call center reviewing it, then it going to a Sheriff's Office personnel that's a liaison to pass that information to us. So, there's a time gap that we don't receive this. I got a couple this year that were two days after an incident had happened. Fortify Florida, you could submit it right now, and I'll immediately get a text, a phone call, an email.
Okay.
And it goes to, we select who receives those notifications, all of our administrators, our SROs and guardians are on those, so, yeah. And it's an anonymous reporting option.
Well, so that brings up my question, because actually I had, mine was on Crime Stop. Are you still serving on their board?
I just recently stepped down because there's a conflict in my schedule, because we have school safety positions, but Mike Kelly's probably going to unknowingly...
So, one of you will probably be voluntold to do that. So, that, I think, is an important information, because I think on each of the devices the students have, it has both Fortify and Crime Stoppers, or does it not?
Crime Stoppers, we're in the process of working to bookmark it. The problem with having the application is we went to, they went to a statewide application, and you can access a lot of information that we don't really want our students to access. So, like, our younger kids could go on there and read about the Most Wanted and the crime they committed, and missing people, and a lot of information that we really didn't want them to freely just click on and access. So, we're trying to streamline it where they can just submit a tip, and that's it.
And that's what I was going to say, if we have any influence on that, we should probably try and exercise that, because if there's something we should be setting up our devices for the students to streamline that process so that they can report it, I know you've been monitoring that, I know you've been looking at how to improve that, we probably just need to keep doing.
Yep, certainly, and I've been working with Ms. Androwski on how to get that bookmarked on there.
Thank you, and welcome aboard there, Michael.
Okay, any other questions on Safe and Secure Schools? We'll bring this one back with some modifications and the future updates if necessary. Next item is Policy 3.72. This is an update on background screening for contractors. This was recommended by NIFEC to cover requirements from Florida Statute 435.12 for contractual personnel on grounds while students are present. The changes are on page one of three, and this was reviewed by Policy Informs in April, and it's in section three. Contractual personnel having access to school grounds when students are present shall submit a complete set of fingerprints and photograph taken by an authorized law enforcement officer or an employee of the district trained to take fingerprints. The fingerprints and photographs shall be submitted to the care provider, background screening clearinghouse, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Is that still work we typically do internally, like we do with our own staff, where they go into HR and get the fingerprinting? So, we're doing that onsite and making that pretty convenient?
Yes, sir.
Who's paying for it?
I think they have to pay for it.
We have a problem sometimes with our substitutes when we say they have to be fingerprinted and photographed, and they don't like to pay for it.
For contractors, in this case, the vendor will.
The vendor will?
Yes. Or the contractor.
What defines a contractor? Is the UPS driver a contractor?
No. Is anybody that's providing some kind of a service on our campus?
Okay.
Like our OTPT, contractor outside that come in will do it. YMCA is another one. We just, I just figured this out the other day, so there's a variety of them because they're kind of transitioning.
And just to give the board some idea, what we're, what Ms. Chief Montgomery is referring to is that we're looking at how we're doing our fingerprinting, because there's some other changes coming with volunteers and such, and trying to have a centralized process for doing that, looking for it to go under Safe Schools. So, because of the background checking, because of some of these fingerprinting, have a standardized place that all of this occurs for our non-employees. So, contractors, well, this would be a little bit different, because some of those are employees as well, but contracted employees, our volunteers, chaperones, those that are not employed by us, having HR still help with the employee side.
Yeah, I don't want to come across as being anti-school safe, because that's not what I'm trying to do here. But so, you know, a guy that's like going to be working on a painting crew, he's going to have to come to the district office here to get fingerprinted before he, okay?
My understanding of how that works is if he works for a vendor or a contractor, he may already have a state badge that can, he can go between different school districts, so he may have been processed by Marion County. They pay for state badging, they can go to other districts throughout the county, or throughout the state of Florida. So, we offer both of that. We do internal, that they can only go to our schools, and then we also have the state badge opportunity as well.
Got it.
Chief, while this has definitely been increased from last legislation, that's some of what Ms. Greco is talking about as far as like chaperoning and volunteers, we've always had a variation of this, I believe, with contractors since Jessica Lunsford are going back as far as that, which has really driven that scenario. So, I think that still plays a big role in that, and Joe, I know was part of that during those periods, too.
Well, I think the importance is if it's during school hours.
Right.
Is where, you know, because we do have contractors come in at night and things like that, where there's no student contact, so...
When students are not present.
Present, right.
But, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
Without opening up a can of worms here, is there an opportunity to offer this service over on the other side of the county, you know, with like the annex for the Sheriff's Department over there?
I mean, there could be. So, it's a matter of, when you're running the fingerprints, there's an ORI that's associated with where you're running it, too.
Okay.
It's about really where the information's being received, that it has to be secure, and it has to be within, with certain people that receive training. So, I don't know, we could put a device out in that area to run it, it's just where.
A body to run it, yeah, okay.
Correct.
I think the fingerprint machine has to be locked, which confidential, where we don't access, who are licensed or trained to be able to use it, know the person that printed the original, or even the party that took away, no. That would be the only issue. A secure area of the county, and set it all up over there. Places. We don't have it.
And to give you an idea, those devices are about $30,000 right off the bat, because we were looking, we're, right now, we have one housed next door in Business Services, and there's one here in HR.
Okay. I was, I was a consultant for the school board, you know, back when just, when it all started, and it was somewhat cumbersome then from the vendor side, so I'm sure it's a lot more now, so I think as long as in the bid process, we're letting these people know that all of it, and I'm sure we are.
Yeah.
As long as they're duly notified ahead of time, that they're going to have to go through that.
Yep.
Any contractor we would have, we always put it in there, that employee that has to come to the school district, or it has to be level two.
Okay.
Now, to Ms. Count's point on the substitute teachers, though, aren't they still allowing a reimbursement to be made if they sub so many times during the year on the...
If they've met a certain number of days, it's not a reimbursement for their costs, it's a reimbursement for the retention fees. They don't have to pay the retention fees for that. But with this new system, that is all kind of upfront cost, whenever someone, the new one comes in, it retains their fingerprints for X number of years. But if they've subbed for us, I believe it's four days, they have not for at least the past 10 years, had to pay any retention fees to remain as a sub with their fingerprints.
I thought they were reimbursing their screening fee for a sub.
For subs? I know that we have for transportation and some of those, but they don't have to be re-screened every year whenever they are substitutes coming in.
Right, but if we have a sub, a new person that wants to substitute in our schools, and they have to do the level two screen...
You give me just a couple minutes, I can check.
Okay, yeah, just, I'd like to know, because I thought that was our, we'd already...
I'll find out.
We'd already verified that, that they could, if they did, what is it, four days, or I can't remember.
Yeah, but that's, but that was, if they're currently subs, and they sub those four days, every year there's a, we have to retain their fingerprints. So, if they did not sub those days, we'd have to tell them, "Hey, you need to pay us the $8, $12 to retain fingerprints." If you did sub, you did not have to do that. So, every year they don't come in and get fingerprinted. We retain, we send into the state to retain their fingerprints, and those were covered.
So, this screening, though, is a five-year, the screening that we're doing for contractual personnel is good for five years, why can't there be a five-year approval?
The new ones, they are. This, we're talking about people who have already had their fingerprints with us, we're retaining theirs. Anybody new coming in, it is, that's what this does, this is an upfront fee for those five years of retention. The state has just completely flipped what they were doing before.
Okay. So, yeah, I'd like to know, how much does it cost for a person to come in, you know, off the street?
Just a couple minutes, I can find out.
Let's say they have a bachelor's degree to get screened, and then if we have a reimbursement plan?
So, the reimbursement, Mr. Brown, we'll check on, but as far as the cost, it's $65.
Yes. Okay.
Because some of ours, like transportation, will cover the cost for sub-bus drivers coming in and to be trained, so that way we can try to get them in the process of getting their CDL and things like that.
Okay.
So, certain departments will cover that on their own to bring those in, but I can tell you the cost of what it'd be for the retention for the subs.
Okay, yeah.
If you give me a couple minutes.
Yes, okay, that'd be great.
Okay. As far as that goes, there's no changes to the policy, though, we're good with the language.
Okay.
Moving on to item number three, the Policy 5.20, student assignment. This is actually my department. This update includes planning and growth management, recommended modifications to make the policy consistent with Policy 5.201, student out-of-zone transfers and choice, as well as the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, and this was reviewed in March, and it just clarifies that it's subject to grade-level capacity, and we took out the transportation language, so it's no longer guaranteed. Any questions about that policy? Okay. Next one is Policy 6.17, an update on appointment or employment requirements. This recommended update aligns the policy with Florida Statute 435.12. The policy has been updated to specify requirements if there is a break in service on page three. In addition, the HR department made some minor modifications to make it consistent with our own department titles, and the Policy Informs Committee reviewed this in April.
Ms. Count, I did have a question on that previous policy, just real quick, I didn't get it out before.
Mr. Dixon, I'll answer it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So in reference to the previous policy on page two, this is the policy on student assignment. So we were taking out the wording about the transportation, right? So page two B. But wouldn't it be better just to say approval if granted is with the understanding that the parents and or legal guardians are responsible for providing transportation to the reassigned school? Why don't we just leave it at that? You know, basically, there's a question now, right? If they're giving, if they complete this form and they're approved, or they're going to go to a, you know, they complete the special attendance preference form, shouldn't we tell them that it's going to be their responsibility to provide transportation?
Yes, you're correct. I mean, I, let me read it.
I, I.
There are some exceptions, but I think it would be appropriate to put that back in.
Right, what we're saying is they could have gone to the nearest bus stop, but that's no longer an option, right? It's going to be their responsibility to provide transportation, period.
Yes, unless it's for a, an academy that's approved by the school.
Yeah, which we, yeah.
But this isn't, and I, and I agree, Mr. Dodd, with what you're saying, but I think this is not prohibiting us as still a practice to do that. Because I think that in practice, I don't know that that's changing. It's just that we're taking away the mandated portion of that.
Saying as otherwise, unless otherwise approved by the school district, it's the parent's responsibility. Yes.
That's what I'm saying, right, yeah.
What I'll note is this is being adjusted to align with 5.201, right? And in 5.201, sub two, sub D, it says the board does not provide transportation to students with school choice assignments except as otherwise provided for in policy or by law. So if there's any other exceptions like, you know, the academy, science or whatever, that'll be covered by that?
Right.
I don't think it hurts to have that language in 5.20 as well.
Yeah, and five, 5.00, yeah, okay. Or 5.20, you're right, I'm sorry, on student assignment, yeah. So maybe, Mr. Dixon, if you could just wordsmith that in a way so that we know that it's the understanding that, you know, they're responsible for providing transportation, less.
That's a good, that's a good point.
But Mike, and while I agree with that language insertion, I do go back to the practice now. Are we saying if a parent drives a child to a bus stop that has capacity to, and for them to then get on that bus to go to a choice school, we would prohibit that? Or are we just saying that we are just not, we're not going to be mandated to do that?
I think we used to allow that in every case, but now because of the bus driver shortage, we had to back away from that. So we would, in a practice, still allow that, but we would not guarantee it.
And that's what I mean, and that's really what I was meaning. It's not going to be a guarantee, but I think, I don't know why we wouldn't if there is an ability. And my understanding has generally been as Ms. Farmer has, has done that. If, if there is capacity, if there is an ability, that would be considered, but we just cannot guarantee that that is going to be something we do.
It would be looked at as a case-by-case basis then, instead of just, you know, assuming I could drive my child to the closest bus stop to that school.
Right.
I mean, obviously, we don't want to create a hardship for somebody.
And I know in some cases, it's like, well, that one might stop, not be available, but the one near my work is, and that would work out just as good. And so I know that that's been conversations in the past where we've tried to work with the parent.
Came up because of the bus driver shortage.
Right.
So we took it, but we would always make those adjustments if we could.
That's, that was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure that this was not changing that philosophy in general.
I'll put that back in.
Okay.
So I think if we're going to say it's a case-by-case basis sort of thing, you look at 5.201 where it says the board does not provide transportation except as otherwise provided for in policy or by law. You may want to include some sort of provision saying, you know, upon application or on a case-by-case basis, if there's space available, you know, bus transportation could be provided because then otherwise it's not supported in policy.
Not allowed, right.
Now, that was kind of really what my, was trying to make sure I flushed out.
So really, if that's the case, we probably should leave this whole statement in there. I mean, I don't see.
It goes back to the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, which is adopted every year and it states the transportation policy. So we.
Capacity seems to be the issue that's really at hand.
That's the issue.
Right, if that bus is max capacity, we're not going to roll another bus for one out-of-zone student.
Obviously, if you've got a, you know, 10 out-of-zone students on a bus and you can't make space for somebody who's in zone.
Right.
So.
That's why I wonder if even, or if capacity is not available or something of that nature.
I don't think we want to tie our hands with it.
And that was, that was my thinking. So I don't know if there's a, a way to address the, you know, the flexibility of capacity.
Are we seeing out-of-zone more for parental convenience or is it just the school choice? Or what are the reasons for this?
Well, nowadays, you can go to any school for any reason if there's capacity. And it's usually, depending on the grade level, for, for the younger kids, it's usually for after-school care. You know, they want to ride the bus that's close to the parent's employer or the grandparent or the friend or the after-school activity. In the higher grades, it's, you know, an academy, it's, you know, they want to go to a school for whatever reason.
Right.
So it's, it's all over the map now. Okay.
All right, so I'm not really clear. Are we just going to leave the whole statement in there? And then, because it does talk about capacity in there, right? So if what, Nick, if what you're saying, maybe it has to stay the same then.
So the only change that I think is in line with what everyone is talking about and wants here is basically as it sits, it gives a parent or guardian the complete choice to go, I want to drive my kid or I want to drop them off at a bus stop, provided there's capacity. I, and if I'm misunderstanding this, let me know, but as I understand it, we basically want to transition to you're responsible for driving your student. However, if, you know, if you want to make application to ride the bus, we will see if there's capacity and allow on a case-by-case basis. But all that language where it says if we're at capacity, we're not going to create a new stop and you can be removed from, from the bus, you know, due to behavior or whatever, I, I think that all probably needs to stay. But I think the language just needs to be adjusted to say, rather than an either-or, we would take out that last part of, or the nearest bus stop of the reassigned school and then change the next sentence to say, you know, upon application and the availability of empty space on the bus, you know, and then you can kind of just keep on how, how it's written.
I recommend just taking it out and we can, I mean, it, it, if, the reason we took it out was because of a bus driver shortage situation and because we have more students going to out-of-zone schools now than we ever have. You know, it's probably in the 15% range. It used to be like under 10%. So if we have to make an exception, we can always do that. If, if there's a hardship or a good reason, you know.
But Legal's saying we can't. He's saying that if we, if we change to the language that's recommended here, we can't have flexibility. We have to have a hard rule. And I have concerns with that. I really think that while I don't think that this is as prevalent and I definitely respect the idea of the limited driver shortage, I don't know that if we, if we move forward with the way this language is, I've already gotten people reaching out to me saying, so you're saying that I won't be able to get transportation even if I make a difference of going to a stop that would be within that school zone for that school? And I, and I don't think that was really what our intention is. I think our intention.
What about if we said, if we left the sentence in that Mr. Dodd wants to put back in, approval if granted is with the understanding that the parents and or legal guardians are responsible for providing transportation to the reassigned school? And then we say, or in accordance with Florida statute, or something to that effect, so that we.
But that wouldn't, but there isn't, Florida statute doesn't mandate for us to provide that transportation. Yeah, I, I mean, that's why I think what, what Nick is sharing makes in, in what he's talking about removing or combining and modifying, I think could be done. And then when we get this for publication, if we don't like that language, we can have that conversation then. But we can still keep this moving forward by just having that incorporated at the next stop.
I think what you're wanting is if there's capacity, we'll allow them to ride the bus. Until there's not capacity, then you got to provide your own transportation.
Right.
I mean, they may be able to ride the bus for three months, you have people moving to the area that you have to give, you know, have to let them ride the bus and that person has to now get off the bus and go back to their parent.
But then you run into the choice of, all right, we have six kids on there, who do we remove that's out-of-zone too? Would it be, you know, you run into that.
Well, and, but then again, what we do tend to have is the, the comment of, oh, the bus went by and it was half-full. And why then wouldn't we provide transportation? My dollars are paying for part of that transportation. And, and I don't think we want to get into that. I don't think that's really what our intent is. I think our intent is to have controlled enrollment and some flexibility to say if we can't offer this, we will. If we can't, we won't.
Well, that's what the current language already has in it.
So I think if that's how you guys want to do it, I think you would just leave it as is.
I just want if Johnny's mom works at the doctor's office and has to be to work at seven and the bus passes at eight, 15, he could get on that bus from out-of-zone.
But, but the way this language is proposed, we couldn't, is what Legal's saying. We're, we, we would not have that as an option of opening up.
We can just put it back in and leave it the way it is because what it says is transportation may be denied or revoked at any time due to capacity, et cetera. I mean, we could leave it like that, but we're never going to do that. I mean, we're never going to tell somebody they can't ride the bus anymore after they've been riding it.
We want that child in school, so.
But that's what I mean. That's why I don't know.
I'm glad I caught this.
He would have woke up on it last night.
Well, and we always have the, we discuss the problem with the drop-off and pickup lanes at our schools. So we want to put as many kids on the school bus as we can.
Well, and that's why when, when.
Make that a little bit easier on, especially our elementary schools.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I've, this board and the superintendent and I think all of staff has tried to accommodate families and I don't want us to change from that approach. At least that's what this board member feels.
We want to get them to school.
Yeah.
So whatever it takes.
Okay. So I'll just put the language back in. I won't take it out. Right now, it's crossed out. It'll come back because I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Do we need to make any reference to the statute? No.
And, you know, the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan says something a little different. So when we update it, it'll, it'll be updated.
Inflected.
All right, and then number four is policy 6.17, appointment or employment requirements, already stated that. Did you have any? Says, and employees with a break in service of more than 90 days from a position that requires a background and drug screening must be re-screened if the employee is returning to a position that requires screening. It's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions about that? The last one is policy 7.25. This is grant management. This, these changes were recommended by NEFEC due to the Florida Department of Education monitoring of federal programs requiring policy language for use of federal funds. And we reviewed this one in March. It starts on page one, section five primarily. And it basically just says that the, we'll follow the federal and state grantor rules and regulations. Any questions about this policy?
Yeah, I had one question in regards to the grant application. And it's on, there's a reference to grant administration on B that talks about signing related documents. My question is, doesn't the board, this, so that, that deals with administration of the grant. So we've already received the grant. Where is the wording about the application of the grant? Because it should have board approval, right? So the superintendent, can the superintendent ever sign a grant application without the board knowing about it? Right, I, that's what I, and so what I was, what caught my eye was just that in the administration of the grant, it talks about the superintendent and/or the board chairman. But is the administration of the grant including the grant application? Because shouldn't the board chair always sign the grant application?
I don't think, though, that's, I mean, I don't, not saying I disagree with that. I don't know that that's always been the practice, though, under just any, I mean, there's grants that I think have happened that I don't think the board knew until after the fact.
It was already done.
Yeah, and I don't know that it was out of the line of the mission and expectations of, of the work of, of that the board has put up. But when you think about any time that there's been grants, I, I mean, we write grants on a regular basis that, and submit them that don't necessarily come before the board for every grant. We have to approve the grants, but not the application. Some applications don't require the board, I think, to have approved it, and so that's why they would have gone forward.
But some grants are time-sensitive and.
Right.
It would be, we might lose grants if we.
And now, and that was exactly my thinking on that.
If we intervene in the application process, that, that might throw it out the window.
Well, it does say including documents required for submittal of grant proposals. So I guess my question is, it's the board that gives the approval for even the application for a grant? If we were looking for federal funds, right? I mean, shouldn't the board have the say on whether we apply for a grant or not?
So we, right above that, four, sub A, it says the superintendent shall review grant opportunities authorized for development of proposals. Sub A is application process for grant funds, including.
All right, wait a minute, I've got, which, which number are we on?
Four A.
Four A.
Four A, okay.
So that's basically the application process for grant funds, including school board approval. So that, at the application portion, that would to me indicate that it does require school board approval. I think this is passed, basically, the administration passed the approval process.
Okay, so it does say that we're required to approve it before the, the application is put in.
Four A, that's.
I think that that could be a potential future issue because like, like I think Ms. Count said, that's, that can be like time-sensitive. And, because I, I know in my previous roles, I mean, there's opportunities and you've got like four days to say something.
Or you just find it and you have.
Yeah. And, and if, if we wanted to come back to this board for, you know, quote-unquote approval, maybe it's, you know, ratification after the fact or something would be fine, just, just letting us know that it's in play, if anything. But I, I would hate to tie his hands and say, no.
There's funding opportunities.
Right.
And that, and that was my thinking because there's times where we may have included in the budget the funding for something. Dr. Hebert has someone go out and look for a grant that happens to then be, if they applied for, that would help us in our budgeting. And it's time-sensitive. We're going to have to approve it ultimately to change the budgeting, but we don't necessarily, I don't know that we want to constantly as he's looking for those and the team is looking for those.
I'm not saying this would ever happen here, but I've, I've been in situations where you'll have somebody in the agency, you know, applies for this grant, nobody knows about it, they get the grant and it basically boxes in the authority that's got to approve all this. You know, here's this free money, you pretty much have to go with this project.
That's kind of leading up to my question.
Yeah, I get it, I get, so. You know, it's.
Johnson, as former director of federal programs, I was going to have her.
So Title I, II, III, and IV, Dr. Hebert signs the DOE 100A, which allows him to know what the allocations are for each of those grants. We go through then, in the federal programs, we go through the application process. And then this year, we didn't even get the grant until the allocation, until 30 days before the grant was due. So there would have been no time, so like Mr. Farady was saying, there is no time to, or Mr. Frank was saying, there is no time to take it to the board for approval before it's submitted because we had to have it submitted by June 30th, June 30th this year.
It's times where we have meetings once a month.
Right. Right, there was no time.
Some of those, we get some funding where they, the state says it's a grant, but it's really not a grant.
Right.
It's an allocation.
It's an, they say, but you have to go through this whole process. Like, for our reading, you know, that's a grant, the reading, you know, that we get. I know it used to be called a grant.
The reading plan is encompassed now.
Right. But again, that would be considered. So if you're doing that, then we're going to be tied up with lots of things we're not going to be able to do for for some of this funding, that the state is saying, here, you can have it, but we can't do it because we've got to go through some of these steps. So I think we seem to be thoughtful. I agree with Mr. Frank on thinking about that.
And there are some that specify it needs board approval, so of course, we would have to come. Like, the mental health assistance allocation, it specifies on the, on the documentation that we, needs board approval first.
Is it possible, and Nick, maybe you can, in Section A, where it says, Application Process for Grant Funding, Including School Board Approval, could it be Application Process for Grant Funds, including those that, and insert, including those that require school approval, school board approval, and that way, there's a little bit of?
You could put it like that. You could put, Application Process for Grant Funds, Including School Board Approval, if necessary.
If necessary.
Either way, something to that, in fact, that's completely within the board's purview to to allow that.
I would be open to that if the other board members are.
I like the if necessary.
Yeah.
All right. Is that good?
We all do agree, though, that if the board chair is going to sign any document, that that would be approved by the board. Are we, do we agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, in summary, we're going to change Section 4A to include if necessary.
Yep.
You have good notes, sir, Chuck?
Yeah.
No?
Any other comments on 7.25, Grant Management? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our policies.
All right. Ms. Crowe, pupil progression. Good morning.
Morning.
All right. I do have hard copies for the, of the progression plan, just a couple. Goodbye, Mr. Bradshaw.
Wasn't even something you said.
All right. Everyone should have received, well, it was in the board docs, the actual student progression plan draft for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as well as a separate document that outlined the changes that were made, the revisions that were made for this school year. I will tell you that the majority of the revisions made were additions of just legislation, more detailed legislation being put into the progression plan. So that way, there were, there was more clarity. We also revised all the links. We realized every single link that was in this document were not ADA compliant, so we did reword them so that they did meet that requirement. Some of those other things, like I was talking about, where we kind of just made some revisions that were based on, not necessarily the legislation changed, but we just found that the the details that were in legislation really did need to be put into our progression plan. So when parents were reading it, they understood that clarity instead of having to go to legislation to read it. For example, the home education revisions, you know, really kind of outlining more so of what those interscholastic activity allowances would be. We do that now through our e-school instead of district student services, so that was put in there. We updated the graduation assessment options for the Concordan chart, SAT and CLT. Now, there is, they have to have a higher score on those tests to meet that Concordan or comparative score. So that is reflective in this, in the progression plan. CLT, we did offer it last year and this year. We have now added it into the progression plan, just as a description, because we we kind of explain all of the different assessment options for our parents in here. So we added that one in there so they understood what that test was. There's a VPK section, including new legislation, like Summer Bridge Program, and we do have Mr. Piercy here if we have questions regarding the new VPK legislation that is in, now part of our progression plan. I mean, we can go through each one of these, like I said, but I would tell you that probably the biggest changes that I know that we probably wanted to bring up would be the grading system for our middle school and high school. I feel that those are probably the most pertinent that you would be most interested in and understanding, and it's a big deal to our students. And I wanted to explain those to you in detail. The middle school grading system, and that you'll see on pages fifty-eight through sixty. In the past, last year, it was two semesters, and a child was able to get a D and an F and pass the overall, pass the course. Now, we are, two things with middle school, changing it to four quarters instead of two halves, and they must now, they must actually get a point seven five is what we're calling it, because when you actually did the four-point scale, four is an A, three is a B, two is a C, one is a D, zero is an F. They must get a point seven five when those four quarters are averaged together to get a passing grade for that course. So that will mean that a child must actually get three Ds and an F at a minimum to pass the course. So two Fs and two Ds will no longer pass that course. And the big thing with that is going to be communication, of course, to our students and teachers. This was something that the committee, as an overall, recommended. We heard from teachers, we heard from mainly teachers and and staff at the schools, and many of, I know Ms. Count's as well, that this was something that was really, really wanted, and that they felt that the students were not doing the best they could. They were basically, you know, just getting that D the first semester and then doing nothing the second semester because they could pass. So.
Getting one D the first semester and then doing nothing for three nine weeks.
Well, last, yeah, well, last year, we did the, we did the semesters, but yes, okay.
This is a solid question, probably. Is Skyward set up to make this change for this coming school year?
It will be. If, once this is bad, once we put this in, yes, it will be.
Okay.
So if a kid just doesn't, just does not turn in an assignment, is that a bad for it?
Okay, well, that's different. You're talking about per assignment. It would be a zero, would be an F. Yes. But we're talking about their actual overall grade for the course. And so then in high school, it's, high school is on page eighty-three, currently, this past year, a child could get a D the first semester and get an F the second semester and get full credit. Where now, what we're saying is, is that the child, if they get a D the first semester and an F the second semester, they will only be awarded half credit and have to retake that second credit where they got the F. So, so with them, the, what we're revising it is, is that when you actually average those two together, they must have a minimum of a one point oh, to, one point zero, to actually get full credit. So a D and an F would only award them half credit. However, if they did get a C and an F, that would give them the one point oh, and they would get full credit. So it is upping the game, you could think of it, for our students, that they are not able to get that, only meet that minimum requirement and pass the course.
Ms. Crowe, during our surveys across the county, specifically those at the secondary level, there was an indication, a very common theme, that teachers were not clear that, that there was, for lack of a better term, equitable grading practices.
Yes.
And understanding with their peers. And while that may not have been what was recognized of themselves, they felt like there was inconsistency in grading practices.
You're correct.
So this is really dependent on consistent grading practices.
You are correct.
And having equitable opportunities to demonstrate mastery of standards and those students be able to get that. Parent Empowerment Act has certainly doubled down on there needs to be transparency of that. So while I understand what the purpose is, my concern, and I am echoing this to this board that I have for many years, is until we improve that issue, which was the worst surveys that I can remember in recent times, where teachers have self-identified inconsistent grading practices, we are doubling down on the problem. So I hope we are looking at that, because without doing so, we're going to have some very concerning outcomes.
And there are, there were members definitely of the committee that echoed those exact concerns. That we, we did put together a grading practices committee, I know, last year, to really start trying to dive into this. I know Ms. Lindeman led that committee, and it is still working on that, and it is, it is a concern. And that's where the communication piece is going to come in, where we're really going to need to be talking to the teachers, them really understanding the impact that those grades, and how they grade, and the formulas, and how that works, and how it affects the students.
We're setting a policy without improving a practice. And that's not the students. That is our educators. And again, I would echo, because the surveys, in particular, self-identified by our teachers, that this is a concern, this should be a concern to this board. I understand this is where you all are going with this.
I think it is a concern.
But it is a concern. It is a serious one.
But the problem that we have, too, go to human resources, we have a lot of colleges that are no longer teaching educational methodology. And so we're hiring teachers that have not had training on how to be a teacher. So we need to, and I think we finally realized that a few years ago. And so now, we're implementing programs where we're trying to train our teachers through professional development on exactly what you're saying. You can't have one scrapbook and that's the score for nine weeks.
Well, you can't keep also taking an alpha system that is a hundred-year-old grading system, trying to convert it back and forth to a five-point digit system, where, for example, there isn't a modern assessment today that uses an alpha system. And so we are grading systems that do not, you know, work with each other. And then percentage grade, it's, you can do the history on it, percentage grades really came about when digital grading and computerized scoring came about. Prior to that, we still had an alpha system, which was really based on a historic five-point system. So we, we keep blending all these. So now, you're right, you get a, a new teacher who may not have had that understanding, they're lost. And we all know, as we are trying to improve efficiencies and we are trying to accomplish goals, if we aren't providing professional development, we're going to be the ones that are on the hook for that.
And we still have to understand, too, and we've got teachers that are teaching a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty kids all year. So in, now they've got five classes, so if they have a unit test, and they've got that unit test in, in five classes and on the same day, they can't grade that many papers in a few days. So they, we have to compromise with their, their lesson plans and the expectations of the parents to see, oh, they got the test today and they should have the grade in the book by the day after tomorrow. Because it can't happen, not because.
Well, that's another piece that I was going to bring up in a minute after these two pieces of grading. The actual assignments, after, we were going to be putting in a blurb. I actually spoke with the high school and middle school and elementary school principals during their retreats last, last couple of weeks, and we have agreed on adding a blurb in the progression plan that states, "Assignments submitted by the due date will be graded and reported within one week, except for projects or essays which may require additional time."
I'd like to.
That we'll be adding in there. And they, they all wanted this, thinking that this would kind of give them that as a uniform guideline.
Yeah.
I received this message from a teacher. It says, "Good morning, my friend. I know that it'll be going before the board over the summer with regard to averaging of grades, half credits, and all the kinds of stuff. I just want to show you a prime example of why we are so adamant about pushing on averaging the grades based on four-point scale versus actual numeric scale. The issuing of half credits, if you look at a student's absences and then you look at their semester two grades, you will see that students failed four classes for the two semesters, but will be having a final grade passing all classes. They had ninety-three to absences, eighty-seven absences, et cetera. Is this something that changes this, or is this exactly what?"
Basically, so they're saying if that child got a D the first semester, they basically didn't have to show up the second semester and they passed, where this would make it to where they could not, they would only be awarded a half credit, not a full credit, if if that child got a D the first semester.
Let's just remember, what we also know is, these students are unfortunately not seeing value in coming to school. And the idea is, are they feeling engaged? Are they feeling that there is benefit? And when I'm saying this, we know that right now, we're having to modify our budget because students are saying, you know what, forget it. I'm giving up altogether, and I'm just going to go to homeschool. We're lucky if they go to to homeschool. The reality is, a lot of these kids drop out. And when they drop out, we're not just losing the FTE, we're losing a kid. And this isn't a Citrus County situation. The legislature tried to take on chronic absenteeism for two years, and they have recognized this is not an easy fix. So if we think that we're going to pass a policy that is going to motivate chronic absenteeism, I don't think that that's going to be successful. I understand that teachers are passionate about that. I'm married to one who is equally as passionate about this. But the challenge that this board has to do is, are we setting a policy that is going to reflect mastery of standards? Are we setting a policy that is going to encourage students to want to come and be a part of school? Or are we creating further challenges? And I don't know that I think either is clear in doing this.
But is it the masses or just a small amount?
Well, that's, that's an interesting, an interesting question. Because I think that the number has been, when we looked at it, it was a much smaller amount.
Right, it was a small amount.
It was a more perception by, by our educators than it was an actual impact.
But I think. You looked at actual DF students.
Yeah.
And I'd like to serve the masses, you know, the, the one or two children that are doing this, you know, I don't think the average student is going to try to just skate by, you know?
Well, I think that, from what I've seen, the students know the system.
Oh.
Yes.
And it is a shame to me, when I, I want to, I want, I want to focus on learning. And if a kid skimps by and makes a D one semester, and they, they know, they don't have to do anything, they don't have to show up.
Right.
And they're going to pass. And that's a shame, because we want these students to apply themselves and to learn. And if they think they're, they, they get by by doing the bare minimums, and that's kind of human nature, right, to do the bare minimum. And so we've got to set our expectations a little bit higher. For me, to say a kid makes a D and an F and they pass the class is not doing justice for that kid's learning. And that's why I think we need to do something different than what we've been doing in the past. And I think the message will get out to our students that this is no longer a way for them just to show up or not even, just get past one semester and they're done. You know, we don't want that to happen.
And I've, I've said, too, that if you look at what we've done with our curriculum, with our academies, in every one of our schools, middle schools and high schools, talking about secondary, because primary is kind of in its own little world. But if you look at what we're offering these kids, and we've said and very proudly to say, that we can, with the curriculum that we offer, they can be job-ready the day after they graduate. We've got them certifications, we, how many certifications do we offer them that make them job-ready?
Roughly, you're talking about a hundred and fifty different certifications.
Yeah, a hundred and fifteen, and the academies. Every one of the ones coming out of our academies have been hired, some locally and some not. But everyone going through that Health Academy has a job application right away. And so I think probably, we're talking about a small minority of kids that are absent, taking advantage of the system, trying to get a diploma. But I don't want, I think we should maybe advertise a little bit more to those troubled kids, maybe through our counselors or something like that. Maybe that's where they're missing the communication. When they're, they're scheduling their classes, they need to make sure that they understand that if they're in Mrs. Crabtree's culinary class, they've got a job as soon as they graduate, if they're certified in her culinary class.
And, and I agree with all of that. And I, I understand with all of what you're saying when it comes to the averaging of the semesters, and that makes perfect sense. The problem is not that. The problem is when in the same courses, in the same hallway, one child can get a C and another child is getting a lower grade, or a grade that cannot be averaged in the same way, because we do not have the, as, as our surveys are saying, we do not have equitable grading between classes in the same courses. That is where there is opportunity for us to do better, and that is where, I mean, again, I'm not just saying this as a theory. Our surveys from our teachers are saying there is not standard grading practices between their peers. And if we now are imposing a very punitive situation, you have to recognize, if you don't have consistency there, you're only going to exacerbate a problem. I understand why this is an emotional issue. I understand why this is an emotional issue. I think that at the end of the day, we are talking about a small number of students. I'm just saying, while we're doing this, we have got to focus on providing professional development for teachers so that we address that issue. And I know there was improvements last year, but I think that there was more work to be done.
Absolutely. No, that, you are correct.
Well, I think the professional development, they'll, it'll help the teachers a lot if the kids are there in school. If they're there to learn, I mean, maybe they won't need as much professional development because the kids are there. We're talking, Thomas, we're talking about the D and the F kids.
Mr. Dodd, we're also talking about the kids, the 300 of them decided that they weren't going to stay here because they felt there was no value in being in our school system. And that is happening. When you have now, pre-COVID to post-COVID, almost a 1,500 to 2,000 student increase in homeschooling, you cannot tell me that we have more students that are being more successful in going into home education only for the purpose to evade the traditional system.
Well, you can't tell me that...
And, and that's where I have problems, to say, listen, we make it so that we're saying now, we're just, we don't, we are not caring. What we're saying is, we're going to set a rule, and if you can't follow it, then find a different way.
But I don't think some of those people that have left for homeschooling really truly left our system because they didn't like our system. When the state started to give voucher money to parents that are homeschooling their kids, that became an income. And so a lot of, a lot of people, they didn't really understand that they had to produce receipts to get the income at the time. But a lot of kids left because the government decided that they wanted to push vouchers away from public schools. Our school system, I think, is good. I would recommend that, as far as the grading is concerned, because I was a department head for several years in the English department. If, if our teachers, we met every month, and more so if we needed. But somewhere along the line, we can get professional development to each one of those teachers very easily and individually through their department heads. They meet as department head, and, and then they go to their teachers, and they have some consistency in those meetings. And they can ask questions, they can say, okay, what are you doing in your classroom? Can I, can I, can I borrow this? Can I? And there's a lot of communication at that teacher level. And that, if we focus on, on letting the schools do what we're talking about right now with that professional, but it goes down to the department heads, making sure that everybody in their department is doing what we want them to do. And that we don't have a little renegade running around.
Well, one thing this will do is it will require a student who makes a D first semester, it will require them to make a D second semester.
That is correct.
And is that too much to ask? I don't think so.
As long as the D is the same.
That the D, I don't think that a D and an F is a passing score. It should not be for the whole course. So I think that will encourage students to come to school to make the D again. Sadly, I wish they were making the As and the Bs and they were applying themselves. But at least if we know they're in school to learn and they're in, doing their best, if they pass it with two Ds, or they make two Ds, they pass the course. But a D and an F, I just don't think we should not pass them.
That is all dependent.
And I still remember, and Tom, and all due deference, all of us went to school, and especially when we got into college, if we had a choice of, between this teacher and that teacher, the word is out to the kids.
Give me.
Give me that teacher.
Yep.
And, and we did the same thing when we went to college. Did we want that teacher or that teacher?
But Ms. Counsel, you just said, we have more and more teachers that are not coming out of teaching college than when we were there. So what we know, and what our surveys are saying, what is this is saying over and over, is that a D is not the same in every classroom. So when we say, it's not much to ask for a D to, has a minimum, that is assuming that the D is meeting the mastery of standards model. And what our own teachers are saying is, it's not. So when you say that, I would agree. If we had mastery of standards grading that reflected a D being that work, then that would make sense. But when we know, to their own admission, it's not, we have to recognize therein also lies a challenge. Because a D in one classroom may actually be a B in another classroom.
But you also, you have to consider...
So that means they would have more than successful.
Even within that department.
And that's, again, the survey. That is not, that is not me coming up with this theory. That is our own teachers reflecting that.
But if, but if you have to understand, and I still think it's going to be in the department, because I, I...
For sure.
For years, I taught ones and twos and threes and fours and fives. And a D in my four and five, pre-AP class was a lot different than the D that was in my Level 1 and 2 class. And my curriculum was different. Same thing, but different teaching methods and things like that. So you can't, you can't say that a D here has to match a D there, because it's, you're dealing with, we're dealing with different levels of children, we're in different levels of curriculum. And you have to trust the teachers through our professional development to know that in your classroom, pre-AP kids, this is a D.
Mm-hmm.
In your classroom, teaching ones and twos, and your ESE, this is a D. And it's not going to be the same D across the hall, because the kids are different and our teachers are different. And I don't want to, I don't want to create a bunch of robots thinking they got to push out the same D, because they have to take care of the kids in their classroom the best they can.
And I would agree, but I still think that what is expected and what actually statute says is there needs to be a reflection of mastery of standards in the grading.
Yes. And, but, but they handle that. All of our textbooks have the standards, the, the particular, in my English, the short story that I selected, the poem I selected, had the benchmark right there. And so we covered them. I put them all on my assignment sheets. But, but the, the way that, the way that you presented it, the way that you test it is different. The same language for ones and twos, sometimes you have to say the same thing, but you have to say it three or four different times before you get all the eyeballs going, I got it. And in a pre-AP class, you can say it one time and they go, okay, move on, I got it. And so you have to give, you have to give us some latitude. We're not going to have a D over here and a D over here matching all the time.
I understand that. But again, when we have state standards and state assessments that do have that, follow that, a different rule in that way.
Don't get me on that soapbox.
I understand. I believe me, and I'm with you there. But, but that is the rules that we have to, we, we have to abide by.
I know. I'm not going to say anything about state testing.
I would just like to add, and I know Ms. Crowell can add more to this, but during these meetings, a lot of this did come up during our student progression and then, and then meetings that we had, of course, with our team after. And I think it did draw additional light to the grading practices. So I can appreciate Mr. Kennedy saying there is some work to be done. I think it also lent us to add that additional language about monitoring of those grades. It's also an expectation, and that's something our school leaders will have to follow through with, is making sure that those grades are posted in a appropriate amount of time so we can catch some of these things earlier if we're seeing that they're, they're becoming issues. And of course, the communication, not only with that student, but with those parents. So I think that also lent to us saying, okay, we need to add more so we can have some consistency with when we're expecting to see those grades, to hopefully, if we continue to see issues, that we can catch those sooner. I'll also speak to the attendance piece. A lot of conversation had come up about attendance, and we've explored, Ms. Crowell explored with her team, a lot of different districts, what are they doing for attendance? We went back to statute. And some of the ideas we had were not allowed to do by statute. So our hands are tied there. But in those conversations, there was other things that schools are doing to promote attendance. So we realized that while these are, yes, hand in hand, there are different approaches that we can take. And I guess I'll just go back to saying, there's some work that we can do. So I want, I don't want you to think some of these conversations didn't happen, they happened at length.
Yeah, and they're still happening. And we are, we are doing the work. We are working on this currently.
And, and that's where I, I have great appreciation for that, because I, I do think the teachers are frustrated. I think that the parents are frustrated. The students are not feeling engaged and motivated and understand their own destiny in all of this. And there is opportunity. Citrus isn't unique about this. That's the other thing. If we just think that we're going to pass a policy and everything's going to get better, I think that is, my fear is that that's not going to improve it. This is about improving grading practices, and this is about improving instruction. This is about having students that get engaged themselves. The reason they come to school, as we know, it is because of that teacher. The reason that I can point to my success is because of Mrs. Andre and Mr. Lindwait, who made a difference in my life and made me want to come to school every day. I know people that will say, I came to school every day because Mr. Bitner, I knew I was going to get to C and be a part of his classroom. That's what we need to, to do. Whether he and how he graded, they knew he was fair, he would be equitable, and he would give them an opportunity for success.
And the other thing, a couple of years ago, remember when we had the Friday at the state meeting and the panel of students? And one young man kind of finished up the panel discussion by saying, the teachers need to tell us why we're learning this. And, and so sometimes it's just, you have to put, in reality, what it is. Like an algebra teacher says, you need to know fractions? Yes, because if you're going to read a recipe, you better be able to read fractions. And, and something like that. So maybe some of our teachers need to understand that they can't just throw curriculum out without telling the kid, this, this is going to be useful for the rest of your life.
Okay, so we do have, with the middle school and the high school grading system the way it's worded, there are examples in there as well, helping the parent and student understand the, you know, some examples. I believe we have maybe three or four examples, I believe in the middle school one as well. But there was one other thing I wanted to add that is not part of the changes here that we will be making due to new legislation that, that did just pass. But before that, I wanted to know, is there any other questions regarding the grading pieces?
In the GED part, one change was said, the old people progression said that the child had to withdraw from school. And the new one doesn't say it.
They still, they still need to withdraw from school to get their GED?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
They still do.
Right.
Okay.
It's just that we do not need...
It's kind of covered there because of the first sentence, these are requirements, but...
Well, they would withdraw, yes. However, there's a different process in place, and there isn't necessarily need to be a permission by the, allowance or permission by the administrator, the school administrator, for those to happen, where before they were, they were more a part of it.
And then we've added the language, the state said that they could drop out of school at 16 and take the GED. Did we have any instances in Citrus County of a child and parent withdrawing and taking the GED?
Taking GED, yes. We, we have students that do that, that go in, and they'll not even enroll in WTC for the adult ed to prepare for the GED as well, and then get the GED.
Okay. And see, that, that reduces our number of students in our classroom for, at the junior and senior level.
Right, I mean, it's not a large amount. I mean, it is a small amount, but...
Plus, they go in then as a non-grad.
Correct. GED students are still a non-grad when you look at our graduation rate.
Yeah.
Which is why I was meaning that you would need to withdraw from our school to actually, you know, obtain the GED, to be GED diploma. Okay. All right. So then, the other parts I wanted to bring up is, is that in the back, we do have our MTSS. We did revise it so that it is a little bit more, one, you can actually read it a little better, the formatting of it is better. We did also change the standard diploma requirements, Appendix B in the back, that allows for some other pieces of legislation that did go in place, I believe, last year. For example, the requirement of a half-credit of personal finance, and also where CTE or two credits of JRTC are options for fine and performing arts credit. So those kinds of things were added, and that's directly from the DOE. And then finally, the new legislation that just passed currently, or just recently, is the removal of the certificate of completion. So in the, just recently, a student could get a certificate of completion if they received all 24 credits, the required credits. However, they did not obtain the 2.0, or they did not pass the assessment requirement. So if they did that, they were given a certificate of completion, and they did walk with our, with our graduates. Just not a high school diploma, and they did count as a non-grad. The state is struck through, the line says, talk about certificate of completion. So now, basically, if a child has the 24 credits, however does not have that 2.0 or has not met the assessment requirement, they are going to, they haven't told us what the new withdrawal code will be. However, we are, of course, encouraging them to be a fifth-year senior, where they would come back and possibly, you know, try to, you know, rectify that GPA, take the assessments required. The DOE is going to be creating some kind of document in January of 2026, giving us more information on what we can give that student as options that, you know, would have gotten a certificate of completion before. We are going to be talking as a, as a county, as Citrus County, on what are we going to do with those students regarding still being able to walk? We can still allow them to do that, but we're going to talk about what that would look like.
This was, if you don't know, board members, a specific representative that just decided that they did not see value in the certificate of completion, and so they just targeted it. The problem was, there was no plan in how and what to do with these students. And we go back to, again, motivation of why kids come to the classroom when these kids, and again, we talked about MTSS. The wonderful and terrible thing about MTSS is we are trying to ensure we're getting modifications and opportunities and tier interventions for students where they need them, and not necessarily by labeling them. But then when we can't label them as an ESE, they get to high school, and they've been very successful till they come to that state assessment. And when they come to that state assessment, we have said, we value you in every way, except you can't pass this state assessment, and you did so great, we can't label you ESE, so we're just going to give you this. And the one thing we had was at least a certificate of completion. Now we have nothing. So they have nothing even as a paper, really, at this point, that would say, I've at least completed everything. I've done everything. So I again say, these are motivators that unfortunately, students say in that semester, why should I come? Why should I keep doing this? Because I'm not even going to be able to get a certificate of completion.
You're going to really get me on my soapbox.
Sorry.
It's disgusting.
Not sorry.
But I'm going to tell you right now, because I, I loved my ones and twos, and I, I could get kids to do the Concordance Score on ACT when it was 15.
Mm-hmm.
I went from 74% state test passing to 37% because the state raised the Concordance Score to 19. Now they backed it down to 18, but it's still hard. But the state keeps throwing blocks at us that we can't surmount. And the state testing, to me, is absolutely, totally unfair. They, they rescind that ELA they're talking about, rescind, I want a, I want a diploma for every kid back to 1995 that had 24 credits, 2.0, and that one test kept them from a diploma. They deserve their diplomas.
If they had taken away the certificate of completion and gave us good cause at the 10th grade level for ELA and the 10th, and the Algebra 1 EOC, then they would have given us something. And we could have really been effective, as we are in third grade. But they haven't done that. The Senate is open to that. I think the House is slowly softening. And so I am still hopeful. But unfortunately, to me, taking away this, you know, it was like when they removed the special diploma for our students and they went to access points. So somehow, this is supposed to be great, because now we can tell a student, look, you have these great access points. There isn't a completer. And then we wonder why students are saying, why am I coming to school? These are all connected. And I, I think it's important, though, to say that, because they, they are interrelated. And so it's not one thing, but they are all combined factors. And I, I really want to say, it is why I love this county, because I do believe the heart is in great educators that care about kids. We just sometimes see a little different ways once in a while to try and service them.
So we will be removing any mention of certificate of completion throughout the document.
Sorry.
Sorry, to end with that part, but just letting you know, that will be, you know, after today, of course, we'll be meeting again in July regarding the progression plan, where that will be, the addition of assignments submitted by the due date will be graded and reported within one week, except for projects or essays which may require additional time. That will be added, as well as then removing certificate of completion. Those will be two changes by the end of July, unless there's any other things that you have.
Ms. Kenny, I'd just like to add that our state representative and our senator hold education real important, and they, they show up in schools.
Here, here.
And they want to know what's going on before they vote, and a majority of them don't.
Yep.
So that's why these laws and these rules have been passed, and because, you know, So that's why these laws and these rules have been passed, and because, you know, they don't do their due diligence to find out, is this going to be effective or not? And how it's going to affect our students, how it's going to affect our community. And I think that, you know, just to give praise to ours, that come to our schools and to want to know more. So we're really blessed for that.
I agree very much.
Yeah, I had one question here, back on your comments, consideration. So the one consideration is about asking principals.
Okay, I'm sorry, the way I had that word there. After our, when our committee met, the progression plan committee met, it was discussed at that committee that they would like something put in there, so we were monitoring the grading of assignments. And we didn't want that committee, because not every school was represented there, not every administrator was there, we didn't want that committee making that decision on what that said. So I said, "Okay, I will be meeting with all the principals at their retreats," which was just last two weeks ago, "and we will come up with what that statement would look like." So that was basically, it was only because a note to me saying, "Okay, I'm going to be asking principals about this blurb and working on that blurb," and how we could, we did revise it a little bit based on, because what originally was proposed to the principals is what is typed there on your sheet, and we did revise it a little bit and tweaked it to what I just stated before, "Assessments submitted by the due date will be." And that's just letting you know that we're adding that to the progression plan, and it is not in the draft as of right now.
Okay. So just a comment on that. I had a parent reach out to me about Skyward and some things, and, you know, looking, move away from that, you know, I had some questions. And it was interesting, because their comment with Skyward grading was, "Well, I do have one problem, is that, you know, one of my son's classes, I can go in there and there's everything, and the other one, we don't get anything until..."
Correct.
"...you know, six weeks, and we don't, you know, there's no grading..."
Exactly.
You know, what's going on with that?
And that is a problem.
Right? And so obviously, you know, that's been something that we've got to look at.
Correct.
You know, as far as a reporting process.
Exactly.
But, you know, I think the consistency with our principals comes back to whether it's grading practices or dress code, right? Because we opened up this big thing with the tights now, but it still can't be distracting. But our principals have to have some consistency with how they enforce even the dress code. So I think there is merit to that. You know, I really think that, you know, Mr. Kenny says, "Well, kids say, why, you know, there's no reason for me to come to school because I can't have a certificate of completion." But those, there's kids that say, "There's no reason for me to come to school because I don't have to come to school because I've got a D in the class." You know, and so there's that side of the picture, too. So those are things that we have to address and look at and be consistent, and I really do hope, I guess, so you're going to talk to the principals?
No, I already did. So two weeks ago, I met with them during the retreat, and we talked about that blurb, and we revised it to what I just said to you, what it's going to be.
So that is going to be in there.
It is going to be, if you approve that, yes, it will be in the progression plan. So right now, you're looking at the draft progression plan. I will be adding the sentence, "Assessments submitted by the due date will be graded and reported within one week, except for projects or essays, which may require additional time." I'm adding that sentence to the progression plan this afternoon, and I'm taking out certificate of completion. So when I do bring it back to the board for approval at the end of July, it will be there.
And that will be at our July workshop, though, probably?
Yes, it's going to be 30 days, yes.
Yes, okay. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Kenny, I'd just like to add one thing. I agree with you where kids, if they're not in school, you know, and how it affects their grades, but we have to look at, if kids aren't in school, what are they up to?
I agree.
And, you know, what are they doing? And I know with my background, it wasn't usually a good thing they were doing.
Right.
And there were many victims out there, because they were at work, and these kids were roaming the streets. So we do have to find a way to get them into the schools, and, you know, if dangling that carrot is the way. I don't know the answer, and I wish I had all the answers, but I think it's important that we find that equilibrium.
I agree with you. And if you were in school when I was in school, I guarantee I wouldn't want to come just because you were a cool guy that would want to show up. And I know many students, that's been the case with you.
And just for grading practices, consulting with Ms. Lindeman, some of the professional learning that's already being planned during pre-planning, when teachers come back, there will be some discussion and some professional learning around grading practices, along with when I talk about monitoring, and I've discussed this with, you know, over a couple different things, those standing items on agenda. So we meet with our APs when there's collaborative planning within teachers, this being something that is an expectation for them to talk about and review and discuss, going back to, you know, inspecting what you expect. So just know that we are, we do already have plans in place for some of this work. And I will tell you, when I did meet with the principals last, the last two weeks at the retreat, and talked about this blurb that we're going to be adding, one of the first things they said was, "Okay, how are we going to monitor that? Okay, yeah, we can tell the teachers that you have to have it in there once, you know, by, within one week, but how are we going to monitor that?" And they talked about that and discussed that, because that is a big piece, inspecting what you expect. You can tell them all day long, but if we're not holding them accountable to actually do it, then it doesn't serve the purpose we need it to. So that was part of the discussion, and now what do we do as a leadership team? How are we going to be monitoring that in Skyward? What does Skyward or Focus have in place that can help them monitor that, and giving them alerts and things like that, so that when grades are not input, you know, past the due date, that they are told that, and they are then going to follow up with the teacher, how they're going to do that? So that will be, we'll be looking at that throughout this year.
Yeah.
Okay? All right.
I have to say one thing.
Yes.
I like Appendix D, much easier than that flow chart on the tier levels.
The MTSS, yeah, we changed the flow charts.
I compliment you on that. That was a nice change.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you in the committee.
Mr. Bittner's going to do our strategic?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Sir?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of Superintendent Hebert, members of the school board, Ms. Greco. I come today to share with you Dr. Hebert's priorities to guide his vision for the 25-26 school year, as instructed by his 100-day listening tour. If you see at the top, it says strategic priorities, and I want to make a clarification that this is not a strategic plan. A strategic plan can be hundreds of pages long and guides all facets of the school district. This is really more his priorities as he listened to all of his constituents and what they would like to see happen next year. I have it broken down into five parts: safety, academic student achievement, career planning, customer service, communication, and then student accountability and engagement. Ms. Councils, if it's okay with you, I think it takes me about 10, maybe a little bit longer minutes to kind of go over everything, and then I can pause after I kind of explain the context for the group and answer questions.
Yep.
Thank you.
No interruptions.
You're welcome to interrupt me anytime. Let's start with safety. Before I get to the two points there, I think it's really important that during our listening tour, we only heard great things about the physical safety of our students in our schools. I know for the last three to four years, during the superintendent councils at each of the three high schools, we always asked the students, "How do you feel about this school? Do you feel safe?" And 100% of the students, every meeting, have felt safe. And I have to contribute that to all the hard work that our former chief, current sheriff, Vincent, did for the school district, and all the excellent work Chief Montgomery has to not only carry that, but to increase that. What you see here is not necessarily things that we heard from under safety, not necessarily things we heard from the 100-day listening tour, but rather a conversation I had with Chief Montgomery on the two things she would like to tweak to continue to improve safety in this county. So she has two. After-school events, that's basically a coordination to ensure that proper safe school officer coverage across all campuses. What we found is that some schools probably have too many SROs, some schools may not have enough. So her goal this year is to try to find a way to make a matrix to make sure that no matter what the event, we have a way to figure out what is the appropriate usage of SROs. Next, technology consolidation. As you all know, we have a variety of technologies in our school district to ensure safety. And her goal, as the year progresses, is to find a way, if possible, to put all that technology under a single elite vendor. That is a, no doubtably, a huge task to try to complete. It's not to say it will be complete, it is to say that it is the beginning of the process to see what we can consolidate. And under those two items, you can really think of that as more efficiency in the system, to make our safety not only as good as it currently is, but to increase the efficiency so a proper use of resources. Next, academic student achievement. Two bullet points. First of all, the focus on reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. It is important to note that this does not mean that the other subjects we offer, art, JRTC, CTE classes, are not important. They are very important. It is to say, however, that we will have a sustained effort to review and look at data coming from reading, writing, math, and science and social studies, because that's what's going to eventually drive a lot of the students' success. If students cannot read, if they cannot do math, doesn't really matter what other class they're in, they will probably struggle. Some of the things that we might, that we will be looking at here, as Dr. Hebert has already talked to the principals about making sure that they, he will have a review of that data when he meets with them or when Ms. Greco meets with them. I know Ms. Lindeman and Ms. Johnson have already begun talking about curriculum mapping at their appropriate levels, and to share data with the principal meetings and at AP meetings. Provide students with multiple opportunities and pathways, the second one, under academic student achievement. This is to make sure all students have the chance to earn an industry certification, or to take an IB class, or to take an AP class, or something that's going to help them excel. The goal from Dr. Hebert is, really, we would love to have 100% of our students achieve an industry certification, and we're committed to making sure that happens. And that leads into career planning, because those two are kind of connected. Three things under career planning. First of all, ZELLO. We started that this year, and we did what was required by the state, but we plan to increase the robustness of that for next year. ZELLO is career planning for students 6 to 12, to ensure all students graduate with post-secondary plans. If you looked at the website, you would see, the website touts it as, "All the ingredients needed to inspire students to explore possibilities." To put some context into this and what we heard on the listening tour, Patrick Simon and the Citrus County Coalition for College and Careers, as you all know, who goes into each of the three high schools once a week to help seniors think about their future plan, they have noticed an increase in the number of students who say, "I am not sure what I'm going to do next year. Oh, yeah, I'll apply to college, but it's already April, and it's too late to apply to college." I know Dr. Hebert has shared on more than one occasion with me that he asks kids, "What do you plan to do the next year?" And they don't know. And so we're not meeting that logo you see there, which has three pathways for students to take. They need better help to identify a pathway before they get two months from graduation. And that's really what the focus is going to be there, was ZELLO can help with. And it's not just seniors, but it goes down to middle school, to help middle schools understand what might they want to do when they get to high school, and then after they get to high school, what might they want to do after they graduate high school. Then we have the toolbox for tomorrow's leaders, and this is going to be an inspirational after-school event for middle school. And without getting into all the weeds on it, what you'll have here is, we're going to pilot it most likely at IMS in the fall, but you'll have basically an eight-week course, where students will, some students will be able to stay after school, two to three hours, and you'll have a different business or a trade come in to showcase a project that you can do. And in the process of completing that project, you learn a lot of great things. For example, they might have a project about plumbing, a little thing the kids can do in three hours, they can bring it home, and in the process, they learn a little bit about plumbing, how the glue works, et cetera. Not real deep on it, but something to inspire them, "Oh, this is something I could see myself doing." So again, more inspirational. One of the inspirations for Dr. Hebert's idea for this really came from Dr. Herndon and Tim Herndon and their plumbing. And if you weren't aware, the Herdons are currently doing an engineering camp down at their business in Floral City. Ms. Newton and I had a chance to go yesterday to see it, and in there you had Mr. Tester from Citrus High School showing some kids how to do drafting. You had Chris Molling, many of you know Chris, who is going to show them how carburetors work in a go-kart. And then you had some others showing kids how to open the hood of a car, look at the oil, how to change a tire, so just some basic things. But that's currently going on with them right now. Then that's the rest of the week, so if you wanted to stop by, you could do that. Judge Urmann actually stopped by yesterday to check it out. And that leads into strategic plans for CTE and academies, and that's basically planning for future and efficient growth. Anytime, as we hear from the community, we need to offer more opportunities for students. We have this possible trade or this possible opportunity. I think it's important that we put this strategically within the network of what we currently offer, to give a kind of a glimpse of how that might be currently with our special academic programs. You will have students who are torn between going to Citrus High School or La Canto or Crystal River, and then there's competition for those students. And so IB might get some, the Academy of Health Careers get others, the Computer Science Academy gets different ones, but there is a finite pool of students, and we want to make sure that if there's any new programs we put in for an academy or the CTE space, that we do so with the understanding that we have the resources to make sure that it can thrive, and at the same time, we don't cannibalize students from other programs, so that all those other programs will become hurt. So it is not to say we're not open to new opportunities, it is to say that we will manage new opportunities with efficiency. Customer service and communication. And I was interested in the school board comment, during the school board meeting today, some of the comments, I know Mr. Kennedy talked about students that were leaving and then coming back, and Mr. Dixon talked about new models with all the different scholarships out there, kids are leaving. We live in a competitive education environment, and we must do everything we can to keep kids when they come to them. And one of the first things is going to be what's called Citrus Six. This will be overseen by Ms. Lindeman, and she's already begun the process. It's basically a standards of customer service that will apply throughout the school district. So when you go into Rock Rush Elementary School, the secretary behind the desk is smiling, engaging you, welcoming you, making you feel at home. It is no different than the type of excellent service we have Publix, and I pick Publix because they're so supportive of the Education Foundation, but they have a Publix promise. They have a certain standard of expectation that when you go in there, you know you're going to have that. And that is Dr. Hebert's vision. If you go into any of our schools, there's a certain standard of excellence you're going to have. Parent Square, this has already been discussed and approved by you, but basically, a portal to streamline communication to the community. School District Advisory Boards, this is a pathway to get input from a variety of community stakeholders. Originally, when Dr. Hebert and I and others were talking about it, he has a superintendent's advisory council at the high schools for students, and we were originally going to start saying, "This is a superintendent advisory board for businesses, or for teachers, or for other staff, or for parents." But we felt that a school district advisory board would be better, because it is the cohesiveness of this group and all of us working together, and they're not advising just Dr. Hebert, they're advising all of you as school board members. And so we're in the process of beginning that, and as Dr. Hebert has said to several groups as he's speaking out in the public, but most recently, the Chamber of Commerce, that he's having people in the community fill out forms of what types of skills they want kids to have, and if they're interested in serving on a business community, so that they can be part of the listening that Dr. Hebert is continuing. It does not end after 100 days. During our meetings with the town halls, one of the big things that came out from the teachers was, they want to know things better internally. And so what you have here with routine staff email updates, and is an internal way to make sure teachers are aware of important, timely things. And so what we envision here, and this is going to be a combined effort with Ms. Blair and me, is a single one-page document, hopefully once a week, short little message from Dr. Hebert, some basic things that are happening that all staff, all teachers should be aware of. For example, there's flu shots available at this time, or you have to get your W2 form or W4 forms for your tax, I mean, these, so basic things that are happening that we're all aware of. But then it'll also become a place where Dr. Hebert, if he has a last-minute message, staff knows, there'll be this email coming from Dr. Hebert, and they can check there for any current pressing issues that they should be aware of. And finally, excuse me, and finally, a weekly conversation, that's in quotes, because we're not sure that will be the title yet, but basically, it'll be a video message that Dr. Hebert will share with the community. We're thinking on Mondays, and perhaps one Monday, we want to showcase Mr. Pistone and Food Services and all the great work they do. and food services and all the great work they do. And it goes back to, again at the top, customer service communication. We live in a competitive education environment, and part of our responsibility is to make sure that we educate our community of the great things that we're doing in this school district, so that those students, those families, want to send their students to our school district. And then underneath at the bottom, student accountability and engagement, we have heard this from the community, we have heard this from teachers at the town hall, staff at the town hall, and we can basically break it, at the first bullet is what matters, consistency in the enforcement of the code of conduct. And then we have two other things broken down there. We've already begun the bus matrix for discipline, to quite, to definite success right now, things that we can always tweak, but definitely that has been successful. And we're now in the process of working on a K-12 matrix for discipline. Again, the goal for both of these is to not only ensure consistency of enforcement of the code of conduct, but that it gives all teachers, all staff, those in our school district, the opportunity to make sure that they have something they can look at, to make sure they're in alignment with others in the county. I know I've probably spoken more than the 10 or 12 minutes I promised Ms. Counts, I'm sorry, but I will, I am done with what the context I wanted to give, let me turn it over to Dr. Hebert, so if I missed anything, he can fill in, and then we'll answer questions.
So I think you did a phenomenal job, Mr. Bittner, I just have to say, so great job here, doing all that. I do want to just make sure with the student accountability, you know, we listed the bus matrix and those pieces, but the other piece is that we are going to make sure that, we want staff, students, parents, community members to understand the code of conduct, and all the components of that. There are many, many pieces in there, many times people don't refer to it until they need it. You know, it's like you look at your warranty that you get for a car, and you put it in a drawer, and you walk away, well then all of a sudden, when something happens, you're like, what did that warranty say? And you pull it out and review to it. So oftentimes, I want to make sure we're being proactive with our discipline, and that everybody understands all the components, because that is a very important document that I know is reviewed every year, I know the board approves it, we have staff involved, we need to make sure that all stakeholders understand it, and understand what those pieces are, so we can make sure our students are being held accountable for what we expect of them in our classroom. So I just, I don't want it to think that it's just those pieces, it's multiple. I could list the number of things in that code of conduct, but those are things we want to make sure. I know the Student Services Team is working on some trainings that are going to be rolled out, so we're hoping that will help as well. So thank you.
I would add code of conduct and policies.
Well, yes.
Yeah, I have to be consistent in both. I like it.
What are the Citrus Six? Ms. Lindeman, I'll have Ms. Lindeman share, since it was a lot of her effort and not mine, so I'll give her credit.
I knew that was coming, so I was typing them really quick on my phone. I felt like it would be a little easier than being on the spot. So just quickly, it's committing to excellence, inspiring positive interactions, timely and efficient communication, respect for all stakeholders, finding unique solutions, and smiling and being kind in all of our interactions. So what we've done is we've created a very interactive presentation, we're going to start later in the summer with our support staff, along with some of our quasi-administrative and administrative teams. We're going to do train the training on that presentation that we created together. And so from there, every school and site will have a team of trainers, so when new people are hired, they'll go through that same presentation together. And it's really about, we're in the customer service business, we're here to serve, and so we need to do so with a servant's heart, and with a smile, in all of our interactions. And I think in the state of education, finding unique solutions, like every one of those letters was very intentional in what the purpose was behind it.
Yeah. And I think one of the things that's just crossing through my mind right now, we were just talking about all this professional development, we, to entice the teachers, make sure that they know how many points they're going to get for recertification for attending, because some of them are, we didn't have enough, and some of the teachers are having to do extra things, so keep throwing them professional development and give them points, and they'll come.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I had something else.
Okay.
And I had a chance to meet with the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, yesterday, had some good discussion, and so we went over these things, and it just kind of got my mind rolling a little bit, some things that I've thought about, and one thing that, I don't know if this is a strategic priority for you, or I think for the district, I want to know how to go about it, but our semi-quinsentennial is July 4th of 2026, so it's a little, little more than a year away. For me, the bicentennial year was a big deal. I was in Citrus County Schools 19, or 1776, 1976, big deal. I want to make it this 250 semi-quinsentennial a big deal in our district. Look at all that we do with our veterans, look at all that we do with the Constitution and our rights and freedoms. So I don't know if that, because this is a priority for '25-26, I didn't know what we could do as a district to really promote this, and really encourage students to learn about the freedoms that we enjoy, and about the Declaration of Independence. So I wanted to throw that out there.
I think that's a great idea, and I believe someone that could help develop something, Dr. Ball. Thank you for being here today. So what we'll do, yes, so what we'll do is, I can ask Dr. Ball if he can begin, we'll bring some things back to the board and share with you all, if you're good with that, we'll just do it as part of my message, Dr. Ball, so just get with me, and we'll come back, and that way, if you all want to have some input, we want to make sure we provide, get the input from you, but I think it's a great idea, and I think Dr. Ball can help lead the charge on that. And someone behind you that might be able to help would be Ms. Perdat, too, so we'll just tie both of you together.
Great.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Ball.
I just, my only, there's so much more than 100 days worth of your time involved in this, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I mean, you listened, and here it is, so. And the one thing that I really loved seeing here is such an emphasis on communications, that's such a big deal, especially to the parents, and even internally, when I'm here now with the teachers, they just want to know what's going on, so I appreciate all this.
Good job.
Any else? No? Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Any other further comments?
Mr. Ballmer, I think was getting us some information.
Yes.
Yep.
I just saw him sitting there, and I thought.
All right, so as far as, as far as the subs that have been reimbursed, that was only done during COVID, that we reimburse the subs whenever they came in, we do have food service and transportation, we'll reimburse the fingerprinting costs for their employees coming in, but for instructional subs, that has not been the case for the past four years.
Okay.
We have, we've paid for their retention of their fingerprints.
Okay.
But we have not been reimbursing them.
So that was only that, that COVID year or two that was in there? Okay.
That was probably the confusion.
Okay, and are we doing okay on our number of subs now? There's not the new for subs?
Well, I mean, the school year's over, so we're good for right now, but, no. We'll have to see how it goes at the beginning of school year, I believe. She gave me a number, we had 343 sub-teachers, instructional sub-teachers available. Now, as far as how we go day to day, it depends, a lot of that depends on whenever the teacher informs us that we need a sub, you know?
Sure, but we have 343 approved.
343 people as of right now that are ready to sub, beginning of next year.
So it sounds like we're, we're in good shape with our subs?
Fingers crossed, yes.
Yes, awesome. That's great news. Thank you.
All right, anything else? No? All right, thank you.
Okay. The only thing is, Form 6 is due July 1st, already done, and Nature Coast Band is having another patriotic celebration, they'll be at Citrus Springs Community Center on Saturday at 3:00, and Seven Rivers at 3:00, Seven Rivers Presbyterian Church at 3:00 on Sunday. And that's some of our kids. This is Brown.
Marty Brown from.
And Marty Brown.
Yes.